Council will call the meeting order for the record. It is May ninth, twenty twenty three at four thirty P M. We will begin our city council work session in just a second. No hurries, no rush. We're all good. With roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Overton.
Here.
Councilwoman Perro. Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item up is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
No changes for this work session agenda, so I move adoption of the agenda as published.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to adopt the agenda. Is there any discussion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. You guys have it, and the agenda is adopted. Except it's the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. You guys have it, and the consent agenda is agreed to. Next, we will go on to item seven, which is under Department Commission Reports, is the Building Safety Month proclamation. I could have Mr. Freckleton join me at the podium, as well as with any members of your team that you'd like to call up, because since they're here, we might as well get them out of their chairs, right? Okay. You guys can stand wherever you want, but we appreciate you being here. So I'm going to just go ahead and read the proclamation, then I'll turn it over to you, Bruce, for Brett, for any comments you guys want to make from that standpoint. So whereas it starts with you, the theme for Building Safety Month twenty twenty three encourages all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, people from Meridian and all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. And whereas building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, labors, plumbers, and others in the construction industry are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes. And whereas modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from natural hazards such as snowstorms, wildfires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas the City of Meridian is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disaster strike. Therefore, I, Mayor Robert E. Simpson, do hereby proclaim, May twenty twenty three, as Building Safety Month, the City of Meridian encourage all citizens to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month activities and recognize that those that help to strengthen our community and to protect us in the buildings where we live, work, and raise our families this night, May twenty twenty three. So thank you for all that you all do every day out there in the community. And Bruce, with that, I'm going to turn this over to you, and we'll do pictures afterwards.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank members of the council for the ongoing support that you always provide for us. You know, we go through our code cycles, we're in front of you, code adoptions and that sort of thing. But today, I just really want to just highlight the staff that we have here at Meridian that carry on the duties every day to make sure that our built environment is safe and sustainable for our community. And we have, we have electrical folks here, we have plans examiners, we have building folks, mechanical, Brett Calder, our building official, he's here as well. So again, thank you for all you do for us, and is there anything you want to say, Brett? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, could I make a quick comment?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so great proclamation, great timing. And in my, in my private work, I talk to a lot of developers and builders. And one of the things that, in addition to all the professional technical proficiency that your whole team has, Bruce, but you seem to be ensuring that they foster a customer service perspective, treating folks with respect, having problem-solving solutions is sort of the focus. That starts at the top. So to your whole team, that's greatly appreciated in the community. You probably don't hear it enough. You hear complaints and not the good stuff. But that aspect of what you and your department do, you do it really well. It's very important, and it's appreciated by the community, that solution-oriented customer service. So keep up the good work, Bruce, and to everybody, it's noticed. We appreciate it.
He says thank you from the cheap seats, but. All right, with that, we will move on to item eight. Termination, release of impact, the assessment and deferral agreement. Mr. Neri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Turn on my camera real quick. So, Mr. Mayor, I think council members know, but for the public's benefit, we are, the city is the conduit for collection of impact fees, both the fees that we charge for parks, police, and fire services, but also we are the vehicle for the collecting of the fees that a county highway district charges for the use of the roads. And so our normal course, and Bruce can kind of explain the process wise, but our normal course is all these fees are collected based on our agreement with Ada County at the building permit stage. Occasionally, and it's been a few years since we've done one of these, based on varieties of reasons, a lot of developers may negotiate with Ada County or with the A C H D to pay the impact fees at a later point in time. Again, the fees are fairly, fairly large, so they can be quite expensive. And so that's often the reason why. We saw a lot of this during the last recession. We did this quite a few times during that, but we haven't done very many in the last five or six years. We just received this yesterday, so I apologize for the lateness of it. That's why I asked to put it on the agenda, since we don't have a meeting next week, and this is holding up a building permit to be issued. So what happens now, and like I said, Bruce can go into more detail, but basically what we're agreeing to is that before we, you have the certificate of occupancy for this, for these structures, they will have to then pay their, their A C H D fees at that point. So they will have to pay the fees, and the only reason it's on here additionally is there's language in there that's a little fuzzy. Now, I didn't write it, the, the A C H D did. Basically just says, if somehow we err in not collecting the fee, they're entitled to seek any other type of compensation for that. I don't know what that means. I'm not totally sure what that means. I think I know what that, what they mean by that, but I'm not certain. But there is, there is a risk, and I asked Bruce to come and talk about it, just so that council was comfortable that the risk is pretty minimal and very unlikely to occur, but I did want to make sure you're aware of it. The language, like I said, it's interesting. The A C H D says if they err, they're only subject to being required to perform. If we err, they're entitled to whatever a court might think is reasonable. So it's a little bit wonky, but it is their agreement, and the developer has signed it. It would then go from us to A C H D to get signed and then recorded. So maybe Bruce could explain kind of the process side.
Bill, I think you did a good job of framing that up. As you mentioned, we have had a few of these in the past. They're, they're pretty simple for us to administer. All of the fees go into our permit software. Before it will allow us to issue the permit, the fees have to be paid. So I checked this morning, the, the impact fees are already in the system. We're going to have to back them out if you guys agree to approve this, this proposal. But then we'll put them right back in again after the permit is issued. The next stop in our system is it won't issue a C of O until the permit or until those fees are paid. So as Bill mentioned, the risk is extremely low. If for some wonky reason it did make it through and we issued the C of O without the fees being paid, the building code does allow us to revoke the C of O as a, as a safety net. So that's, that's kind of how we would, we would administer.
And I would add also, Mayor and Council, there is language in the agreement that authorizes us and their party, the developer party has agreed to, that we can also shut off services to the facilities if they don't pay the fees. So there's other ways to collect it besides the building code. They're in agreement, in this agreement, to be able to shut off their services. So we could shut off their water. We have shut off power when we've needed to. So there are other means to collect it. So I'm not really concerned. I just wanted you to be aware, because we haven't done one in a while.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Thank you. Thank you, Bruce. Appreciate you being here. Maybe I missed it, but what is the underlying rationale for why the developer is asking for this? Is it a hardship issue? Is it a timing issue?
It could be both. I think they like to keep their capital in the bank until the construction's completed. Pay, paying that all out at the very beginning and then not being able to occupy the structure for three, four months.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Yeah, and if something were to happen, let's say the building were sold and it wasn't completed or some sort of similar circumstance, would the obligation to pay that fee transfer to the new owner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Council, any additional questions or comments? Or actions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Yes, well, this is not something we do every day. I think the explanation's adequate. Sounds like there is protection in place for the certificate of occupancy to collect those fees before that's issued. And, and since they're not required to give a reason, I guess we can, I feel comfortable moving forward on this. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we agree to item eight, the termination, release of impact fee assessment and deferral agreement between A C H D, the City of Meridian, and Can Realty. That is before us.
I have a motion, a second. Do I have discussion? Mr. Neri, do we need a roll call?
All right. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to be sure that the maker of the motion, are you doing both of them, which you can, or you're going to do one at a time? Doesn't matter.
I'm comfortable with doing both.
Okay. I just couldn't hear if that's what you said. I just wanted to.
Termination and release.
But yeah, I think a roll call vote probably is appropriate, Mr. Mayor.
Second agree.
Second agrees it is for both, and does that change anybody's desire to have any discussion or comments? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Strater.
Aye.
Overton.
Aye.
Perro.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Norman.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. So up next, number nine, is the Boise State University Students' Analysis of Housing in Meridian, and I'm going to turn this over to Councilman Perro.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to say thank you to the mayor's office for their diligent help in, in the process that we've gone through over the last few months, collecting some information. And I want to say thank you also to my fellow counsel for allowing me the opportunity to have the floor. This, well, not myself, but the, the students to have the floor this evening and the time to share what they have found regarding the state of housing in the City of Meridian. So without a delay, I would absolutely invite the students here to share their presentation. It's an honor to have you, and we're excited to see what you have to share with us. One more quick note, it's my understanding they'll be sharing more, more general information in regard to the state of housing and the use of, of income in relationship to housing costs and whatnot. And then it sounds like we will have the opportunity to dive deeper into some portions of that information this fall. And so I would encourage my fellow counsel to ask any questions that they have. And if the, those questions are perhaps too detailed for this presentation, we will take note of those and see if we can't get them addressed in the fall semester.
Thank you, and welcome. Yes, if you, just like this, if you would start off with your names, that would be great, and then we'll go from there.
My name is Sunny Smart, and I am a resident of Meridian.
My name's Christy Spalding, and I am a self-worked student at Boise State and not a resident of Meridian.
I'm Faith Spalding, and I am a economics and social sciences student.
I'm Shiva Rajmandari, and I'm a concurrent student at Boise State, and we're all part of a vertically integrated projects class with a community partner on addressing housing opportunities.
Thank you.
Right, and we're going to be working off of two laptops here, so we'll see how she goes, right? But first, we want to thank you for having us here today. We were tasked with examining housing needs in the City of Meridian, and this has been a really interesting and exciting project for us. When we started this, we really wanted to have a clear sense of direction and what we should be looking at. And so to find that, we began to examine the comprehensive plan for the City of Meridian and felt like that gave us some great scaffolding and reference points. What we, what we found is that this plan is a really robust and exciting vision for the city. And as a resident, I was excited to read through the plan. I'd never done that. And it made me excited for the possibilities within an already great city. But we also wanted to find out where Meridian might not be yet meeting the goals that you've laid out and how that could be achieved. So as we examined the plan, a few things started to emerge for us, and you'll see them on your screen there. One is that there's a lot of language around Meridian being a community that is adaptable to change, so to the market and the needs of the citizens. Another is that Meridian is a city that wants to be a place where there is a diversity of housing types and incomes. And then the third is that Meridian wishes to be a city that continues with economic development, especially bringing in family wage jobs. Two laptops. There it goes. So as we move forward through this presentation, we will be focusing on the current reality in Meridian as it is compared to the comprehensive plan for the city. We will also focus on who is affected by the current housing needs and situation in the City of Meridian. And then we will also be looking at some policy alternatives that the city might like to consider in light of the information that we will present. I'm going to turn this over to my colleague, Faith.
To begin, knowing that Meridian is an amazing city with beautiful neighborhoods, bound to full outdoors with green spaces and access to recreation, it's a family-oriented community with plentiful community programs. It makes sense that so many people want to move here, making this one of the fastest-growing markets in the nation. We chose first to examine the market through a family that would like to move to Meridian in order to show what that process is like and what it's like to be moving into Meridian. This is the Smith family. They received a new job in the Treasure Valley and are looking to move to Meridian. They have two children, an average about fifty-eight thousand household salary. They're looking towards renting because they're new to the area and not financially prepared to have, to own a home. Let's look at what the Smith family might find as they begin their search. On the low end of two-bedroom apartment rents is about seventeen hundred dollars. Plus, there's a lot of hidden costs. So while it might look like it's only seventeen hundred dollars, it's really over four hundred thousand, four hundred dollar, four, four thousand dollars to get into housing, making it unattainable for many families. This is including the deposit, first and last rent, application fees, administrative fees, and there's even more fees such as utility fees that might not be considered within this rent. So let's take a closer look at cost affordability and accessibility of housing in Meridian. Starting in with cost affordability and then moving into income. To provide a general idea of income in Meridian, we pulled out some interesting numbers. First is the per capita income of Meridian, which is about forty thousand and sixty-three dollars. Meanwhile, the median income for a household in Meridian is eighty-five thousand, two hundred dollars. Additionally, six point five percent of Meridian's population is experiencing poverty, while six point eight percent of population that is under the eight years of age of eighteen are experiencing poverty. So as we look towards the renters and owners, percentage of income to housing costs, renting an owner occupies housing status, public assistance, and inflow-outflow data provides some insights of the cost affordability of housing in Meridian. The cost of living in Meridian is high, while the average household income is very high, too. In addition, a very small percentage of Meridian's populations are using public assisted income and SNAP, which gives the impression that housing is relatively affordable. However, as you look into the reality, we see many households are considered cost burdened, while also the majority of people who work in Meridian cannot afford to live in Meridian. We will come back to this later.
Okay, so now we are going to look at the availability of housing units in Meridian. And so the first thing that I want to talk to you about is, no, that one's fine. Sorry. Um, okay, so the first thing I want to talk to you about is vacancy rates and what they are and why they're important. So just like economists use a natural unemployment rate to help measure the health of the economy, there's also a natural rental vacancy rate that can help measure the health of a housing market. And so that number is four to five percent. That generally means that the market is in equilibrium. And so anything above five percent is understood to be that that market has more supply than it has demand. Anything under four percent indicates that the market has more demand than it has supply. So based on data that was gathered from a national mortgage lending company, they found that the current vacancy rate of Meridian right now is zero point five percent. So based on what we now know about vacancy rates, we know that zero point five percent is underneath the four percent natural rental vacancy rate, which indicates that there is not enough supply to meet the demand. And so what kind of housing mix exists in Meridian right now? We know that it's about eighty-three percent single-family dwellings and about sixteen percent other, which includes multifamily buildings of various sizes. And we also know that this is roughly what the future of Meridian is going to continue to look like. Because in the code audit conducted by W G I, W G I last year, they found that nearly eighty-eight percent of residentially zoned land that's going to be used in the future doesn't support or permit the building of multifamily units. So another thing that I wanted to talk to, talk to you all about was the Housing and Urban Development Fair Market Rent Values, which is a number that HUD releases every year for many local markets. You can go on their website and choose which market you want to look at, and it shows you what the fair market rent values are. And those values represent what the cost is to rent a moderately priced dwelling unit in any local housing market. So I went to HUD and I grabbed those values that they had released for twenty twenty-three in Meridian, and I compared them to a number of listings that I found looking as a consumer on Zillow. And so what I found on Zillow was that there was two hundred and fifty-three available units to rent and in Meridian is like as, I'm sorry, since last week was when I looked. And out of those two hundred and fifty-three units, sixty-nine of them were multifamily units, which includes apartments and condos and townhomes. And the remaining one hundred and eighty-four of those units are single-family dwellings. So when I compared the values of those listings to the HUD fair market rent values, what I found was that only sixteen of the multifamily units out of the six what I found was that only 16 of the multifamily units out of the 69 met the HUD fair market rent value. And then for the single-family units, only seven out of the 184 met the HUD fair market rent values. And so sometimes those numbers can be hard to visualize, so we did create some visualizations for that. Okay, so this is a visualization of the 69 available units that are currently open to rent that are multifamily units, and the blue houses indicate how many of them meet the HUD fair market rent values for this year. We also put together a visualization of the single-family dwellings. And same thing, the blue houses indicate how many of those meet the HUD fair market rent values. So when you combine these two categories, in total, out of the 253 available units that are open to rent now, only about 9% of them meet the HUD fair market rent values. What this, since there's limited availability in Meridian right now, it means that people who are looking to move to Meridian often can't because things aren't in their price range or there's not anything available. But we also wanted to know what this means for people who are already living in Meridian and what it means for people who are currently working in Meridian. And what we found is that there may not be as much overlap between those two groups as we thought.
More specific data from the inflow-outflow analysis conducted by the U.S. Census Bureau was able to give a better insight into cost affordability and the availability in Meridian. This data shows us that residents of Meridian tend to earn more money each month when they work outside of Meridian than those who both live and work in Meridian. Additionally, the majority of workers who are employed in Meridian live outside of Meridian. We can see this as we see the shift in daily traffic on that map. And the majority of workers who live in Meridian do not work in Meridian. This data shows us that for residents who work in Meridian, it may be more difficult for, to afford to live in Meridian than for residents who work outside of the city. For every family wage position, there must be lower-wage positions to support it. That means that if Meridian wants to draw family wage businesses to the city, it must also be able to house the lower-wage workers as well. And we're not currently seeing that in the status quo.
Okay, so we've discussed what it might look like for a family who would like to come into Meridian and some of the barriers they might face in finding available housing and affordable housing. But what about residents who are already here? We wanted to look at how they're being affected by housing, by the price of housing. So this is the Alfred family, and they live in Meridian. They are a multi-generational household. They are considered living in extremely overcrowded conditions, which we will get into, and they are currently renting. Who knows? I do not. Thank you. We specifically wanted to look at overcrowding to see if this was an issue for the city of Meridian. And let's go with a couple definitions first. Overcrowding, as far as HUD is concerned, means that you have one and a half or more people per room in a household. And then, well, actually, sorry, overcrowding is one or more person. Severely overcrowded is one and a half or more people per room. And extremely overcrowded would be if you had two-plus people per room. And it's important that we also recognize that per these guidelines, a room is not just a bedroom. So when you think about your house, if you have a living room, you might have an enclosed porch. These things are considered rooms where people might stay. And so you have to look at the number of actual rooms in a home, just excluding bathrooms, kitchens, hallways, unenclosed porches, those are not rooms. And then you consider that overcrowding would be one or more people have to share all those spaces. So in looking at the data, according to the American Community Survey, five-year from 2021, there are approximately 595 overcrowded households in Meridian. And of these, 465 are deemed, are, sorry, four, yeah, 465 are deemed overcrowded. 60 are severely overcrowded and 70 are extremely overcrowded. And of those extremely overcrowded, all of those are rental households. So while Meridian may not have a statistically large overcrowding problem as compared to the whole population, something interesting began to emerge as we looked at areas of overcrowding on the census map. And that is that it, a lot of the overcrowding seemed to be concentrated around schools, which led to the question of whether children are being disproportionately affected by overcrowded housing conditions. And this is important to consider because for children who live and grow up in overcrowded conditions, their outcomes are much poorer with mental health, physical health, and school achievement. So one way that we can look at children being affected by overcrowding is through McKinney-Vento data. And I will explain what that is because you may not be aware. McKinney-Vento is a federal program for homeless youth, and it is administered through school systems. So for a child to be considered homeless under McKinney-Vento, it's the things you might imagine, that they live in a shelter, a hotel, a car, they're completely unsheltered. But what's interesting about McKinney-Vento is that it also includes youth who live in what they refer to as doubled-up conditions. And so these are children or whole families that now must live in someone else's residence due to financial barriers, unsafe housing, that sort of thing. And so we worked with the West Ada School District to determine the children in the district that are under the McKinney-Vento program. And so what we found out as of April 19th is that in West Ada, and I'm going to read these so that I don't mess the numbers up for you, there are 704 students considered homeless under McKinney-Vento general guidelines. Of those 704, 639 are considered homeless due to doubling up. Those 704 total students represent 493 households. What we don't have data for is how many households are represented just by the doubled-up population. But we then searched within 83646 and 83642 because we know that the school district covers more than just the city of Meridian. So in 83646, there are 153 students who qualify for McKinney-Vento, and of those, 150 are doubled up. In 83642, there are 189 students that fall under McKinney-Vento, with 154 of those students doubled up. So added together, there are 342 homeless students in Meridian, with 304 of these students being doubled up. So I also want to talk to you about how a family, like say the Alfred family, becomes homeless or considered doubled up in Meridian. And while we don't have exact numbers for this, what we do have is anecdotal evidence gathered from the social workers in the district, who are the ones that administer McKinney-Vento. So I was curious to know, how does a family end up on the McKinney-Vento program? And she said, the ones, the two that I spoke to said that most often what they see is that families are renting, and then the landlord is selling the home for a price that they cannot meet. And so they go to move, but rent has grown so high that there's nowhere to move into that they can afford. Especially as you saw with the Smith family trying to move into Meridian, the cost of just getting into a new place, first and last month's rent, all of these things. So she said, "Most of our families would need about $5,000 upfront to be able to move and then be able to sustain rent, which is not plausible for many families." On top of that, a lot of them do qualify for Section 8 vouchers, which they have in hand. But what they're finding is that there is little to no Section 8 housing in Meridian. But there are many, many landlords who will say they have Section 8 available, will take the application fees from families, sometimes an application fee per person in the family, but there are no units. And these are families that cannot afford to be paying the application fees to begin with, and they keep shelling out money for these things. She also said part of the barrier is that families can often afford the rent. They're finding ways to afford it, but because on applications they are required to make triple the amount of rent, they don't match that criteria, so no one will rent to them. And she also said, "What's amazing is she has families who pay up to $3,000 a month to live in hotels in Meridian and still cannot qualify to pay rent in an apartment or a home." So that's how families are getting on McKinney-Vento. So then I asked, "What are you seeing long-term, or how do you see a family move out of the McKinney-Vento program?" And what they see is that there are some families who find a way to find housing within Meridian, and that's wonderful for them. But for many of them, what they are seeing is they are moving out to Caldwell. They are moving out to rural areas and living in a trailer sometimes without plumbing and electricity and all of these things. And so what this is telling us is that Meridian is actually losing residents due to the current state of the housing market. And again, while we don't have exact numbers, this is what the school district is telling us they are seeing pretty consistently with these families.
So we didn't want to recommend specific policies for Meridian because you guys are the policy experts, but we did want to look at some of the ways that peer cities to Meridian have evolved their existing policy in order to kind of fix some of the problems that we outlined. And many cities across the country are experiencing similar problems as, as they grow. So we kind of looked, we divided policy alternatives into short-term, medium, and long-term solutions. In the short term, rental assistance for cost-burdened households could do the most to help keep families' house within Meridian and, and prevent families from, from having to leave Meridian if, as, as rents increase and they can no longer afford their homes or might have to double up. Reducing parking minimums also can reduce the costs associated with development, and specifically the costs associated with development of affordable housing. And that's a really easy fix that, that the city can, can make. In the, in the medium term, we looked at subsidizing more affordable housing units. And this, this can look like direct subsidies from the C, or it can look like changing zoning requirements and to incentivize more affordable housing. And, and this is something that many peer cities have taken on to keep, keep folks housed and to, you know, bring rents closer to that equilibrium rate. And then finally, in the long term, the, the policy alternatives are expanding multifamily zoning for, for renting. And I'm going to say the bad word, it's upzoning, which is increasing density, especially along high, high-traffic areas. And that can decrease the costs associated, especially with commuting, you know, and, and help keep families working, you know, build living-working areas within, within Meridian. And, and then expanding public transit as well can help reduce those costs associated with commuting. And often that goes hands-in-hand with, with upzone, as we're seeing in the city of Boise with that, that battle right now. So those are kind of the, some of the ways that, that we determined the city of Meridian could, could help evolve its existing policy and take the pressure off of low-income households and house, and cost-burdened households in order to, you know, keep Meridian livable and make Meridian more livable for families.
And on the last slide of that presentation, there is a QR code. This QR code links you over to our website that we built. This website does contain a lot more facts, figures, graphs to show visualization. And we also have QR codes, but just so that this is a long-lasting impact of information on everybody, and you can spread out that information. So we'd like to open up for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor?
That's one more, Schrader.
This is really interesting. First of all, I just want to survey, thanking you guys so much for all the work you've did here. This has been really interesting. So Sunny, Christy, Faith, and Shiva, I really appreciate it. Some questions, so. I'm actually, to be honest, I'm surprised, it looked surprisingly positive to me compared to what I would have expected, if I'm being honest. That's just my initial reaction. Like 23% of our inventory being at HUD fair market value, that actually is like pleasantly surprises me compared to what I would have expected to see. I was curious, looking at some of these policy alternatives, if you guys have further information or studies on the effectiveness of those alternatives. I know there's the scope of what you're doing for your class, so I totally appreciate that. But if you could lead us to some resources that would help us to just understand the, you know, efficacy of some of these different policy alternatives. And the reason is, you know, like when I hear something like, you know, maybe we should subsidize more affordable housing or reduce parking minimums, I think it would be really great if we had examples of cities where we could show, hey, this was effective in this city. I hear all the time about cities doing all kinds of things to try to help, but I don't often hear that something is working. So that, that's one question that I had.
Yeah, and, and thank you for making that point. I think it's worth noting that some of the data that, that we used, most of it came from the American Community Survey, which was in 2021, and that was a five-year period. So most of this data honestly is, is coming from before or during COVID. And so the, the, especially like the overcrowding data, I think. And so the place that Meridian is in right now may be, may be different. And I think, you know, your personal experience might speak to that. As far as looking at the policy alternatives, we have a list of peer cities and kind of some of the similar ways that they have approached this problem, and we'd be happy to share those with you. It's difficult sometimes to determine like a causal relationship between one policy and one, and, and one outcome because often the way cities approach this is, you know, in a multi, multi-dimensional fashion. And, and so, so it's difficult. And there's, there's honestly like, there needs to be more research into each of these policy alternatives. But we can certainly share with you some, some of the ways that peer cities across the country and in Idaho have approached this within kind of a budget and, and the, the relative efficacy of those.
And if you look towards our website, within the existing evolving, existing policies, there is quite a few links to other websites that provide what peer cities have done and how effective they've measured it within their city. And even looking towards how some cities have, instead of getting to this point where there is that overcrowding, the unaffordable affordability and the nonavailability of it, they evolved their policies while it was happening. So while it might not seem like there was like a direct correlation to the situation that Meridian is in, there is quite a, a difference in reaction that created the ability to evolve their policy.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel, Schrader.
Just one more, sort of a question, maybe a reflection and a question together. So it sounded like you looked at, it sounded like you looked at the comprehensive plan. And if I'm following, you, there was an audit, and it sounded like 88% doesn't permit multifamily. What's really fascinating to me is like, if we get, it's internal, like a community development dashboard every month. And I've been following that, and if I look at the last couple of years, the proportion that we're actually building and permitting of multifamily to single-family is much higher weighted to multifamily than I would have expected. So, you know, just rough proportions, like just under 1,000, I want to say, multifamily units last year and something in the magnitude of like 1,500 single-family. So like, what's interesting to me is we're building a lot of multifamily. If I look at your affordability, it seems like we're not doing, I mean, 20% is not great, but it's not as horrible as I would have expected. So it seems like our multifamily, we still have some, you know, roughly 20% of the units are somewhat affordable, but the single-family is not affordable at all. So it actually leads me to an interesting question, which is, are we missing a little bit on more affordable single-family homes based on what you guys have seen? Or is that just leaping too far?
Affordability overall is one of the problems. One of the biggest things about affordability within the single, the single-unit dwellings or the single-family dwellings is that, that is kind of the American dream that Meridian has been following, where families usually want to have their own dwelling. However, they're However, there isn't availability or even like they're not making the far fair market rates. That's because like, as a college student, I know so many college students who are renting in Meridian, a single unit dwelling, because the apartments are so expensive or they don't meet the apartments necessaries, but they would prefer to be in an apartment complex. Or even um, just in general, there's not enough supply. We can see that within the vacancy rate. When we're looking at the supply of whether even multifamily housing or single family housing, there's not enough supply in any way to meet the demand of people um coming into Meridian or people who are trying to stay in Meridian. So that's where we're seeing some of those problems and some of those like, though there has been a high amount of growth within multifamily housing in Meridian in the past few years, it's still not enough to catch up where the demand wants it to be.
The the way to meet that supply is to allow more access to multifamily housing. So it's good that that that's what the, you know, that's that's what y'all are doing already. Because, you know, at at the end of the day, at at some point, Meridian is going to run out of space. Um, already is. And and then single family housing, right, isn't, you you can't keep developing single single family housing unless you're cutting the size of those lots. And so to the extent that like people just need a place to live, multifamily housing is is the way to lower costs and and lower costs for single family housing as well. Because when there's more availability, you know, that's just going to lower the market rate.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Just to reflect back on what you guys are saying, no, I mean, that makes sense to me. I think what's really interesting and the challenge for us, right, is, for example, some of the policy recommendations, like reducing the parking minimums, that works really effectively in a city that has public transportation and a robust network of that. Like we have just begun with like a couple of bus lines, and it's really like in fairly infrequent, we're working on that. But we're at a different place in our development where, you know, we we want to try to put that density, I think, on those transportation corridors. To your point, to help with the affordability as well. But this is a lot to to contemplate. I really appreciate you guys doing the work and um, certainly, you know, a lot to chew on. I I'm looking forward to sort of digging in. Maybe if you have a paper or the kind of footnotes and everything, and if you're available to discuss further, I would love to to talk about it in more detail for sure. Thanks.
I'll just add um something that Councilwoman, who I always want to say Congresswoman, but maybe one day, right, we don't know. Councilwoman Perro brought up at the beginning is this is a kind of a 100 mile out view in some ways, right? There's a lot to consider with housing and growth in Meridian, as you well know. Um, and so really, even with the recommendations and the data we've provided, we see this as an opportunity for you to decide, okay, which of these pieces feels like something we want to explore more? Which of these feels like something we'd like to research more? Dig into, look at the policy recommendations? Which piece of data do we really want to know more about? And and so that's our hope, is that you can take these pieces and decide which of these feel really pertinent, which of them feel like things we want to understand more and which feel like things we can begin to tackle. Um, and we would be happy to continue the conversation at any time, and we would also be happy to um, in the fall, do more work if that is something that is helpful to the city. If you have an area, a direction you'd like to go in, then that's something we would be willing to consider. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one whole one.
I think Sunny, you're the one who brought this up about application fees. And I was just curious, what are you finding a serious situation in Meridian? I mean, because this is something that's if someone's representing something and they're charging fees for that, I mean, we're getting into the area of fraud. If they don't have what they're advertising and whatnot, I mean, and and like you said, if if someone's low on the lower end of the income line, that's they can't afford that and they have to find housing. And so what what did you uncover? I know that wasn't part of the overall look, but if you kind of gleaned anything, I'd be interested in in learning more.
Yeah, and again, it's anecdotal, right? It's what's being reported. But it, from what was told to me, it does seem to be a prevalent issue that happens with these families. I would have to go back and look at my sources, but recently I was looking for Section 8 housing in Meridian. I believe I found one maybe available unit. And that does not match with multiple families being told, oh, yeah, file an application or multiple applications. We have units and then they never hear back or it was magically filled soon, you know. So this is again, the information from the district. But what I was told is that this is a pretty prevalent problem for many of these families, and it does feel predatory.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah, we know, we recognize that landlords, there is a cost to these things. If they have to run background checks, do different things, credit checks, whatever that is for that operation, but if they're taking that and nothing and they don't have it available as as they say they do, that that to me is very serious.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one pro.
I can share some more information with Councilman Hoagland on that. At another time, it's it's an inventory issue, but it's also the city of Boise has attempted to maximize that the amount of fees that can be charged to an individual or family. But then the landlords have come up with other fees with different names and added them on. So now instead of one application fee, we've got the application fee and the processing fee and the this fee and the that. So there's, we can kind of, I'm happy to share kind of some of the history and background on what's happened, and and there has been bills that have gone before the legislature to try to manage this at a state level. But yeah, I'd absolutely be happy to share more about that with fellow counsel. I got a quick peek, I got a quick peek at the slides before the presentation and had emailed several questions to your team already, which I will follow up with that and make sure that those questions get answered and sent to fellow counsel. But just really quickly, for everyone's sake, I was wondering if you could share with us in your slides the the definition for the definition of poverty and the definition of cost burden? Like, what's the actual financial definition of that? Is that is that a percentage that an individual or a family is using to spend on their housing? Is it like a HUD category that says if you are a family of four and you make under a certain amount, you're in poverty? Can you share that with us real quickly?
So poverty is set by the poverty line set through just the federal regulations of seeing what the cost of living within a area is and estimating where that would be, where you're not able to sustain yourself, sustain yourself for actually living. And that is dependent on all how like your income within your family size, who all is living with you, roommates, those types of things, dependencies and everything. However, cost burden is where you are spending over 30% of your income on only housing. So this is making it so that people are having to fork out so much money within their housing that they're unable to provide for food or they have to go without um heat for a month, just because they have to make that rent. So that's where the cost burden is coming up. And this is just a HUD rate, and it's shown within the US Census too.
Mr. Mayor, a follow up if I may.
That's one pro.
Um. So when um, when the professors and I had originally talked about this project, the intent was to kind of hone in more on that poverty and cost burdened side of it, and I think we'll get a chance to do that hopefully in the fall. And because what we we wanted to know, and it kind of took on a life of its own, but it also um revealed a lot more information that even I hadn't thought about collecting, which is helpful. But what I'm hoping we can can um look look more at in the fall is what out of a sampling of individuals in our community, how many of them are spending more than 30% and especially more than 50% of their income on housing? Because I think that that no matter what their income is and no matter what size of house, that is the kind of the the one statistic that that takes all the rest of the variables out and really gives us an idea if people can afford housing or not. Because it doesn't look at renters, it doesn't look at owners, it doesn't look at age, it doesn't look at um anything else. It just says, am I spending more than the than the cost burden definition from HUD on my housing? And but um, you know, we don't, we don't know if the answer to the question for those folks that are doing that is, do they move to another city? Right? We we can assume that maybe they have had that option, but maybe those cities have inventory issues as well. So we don't know that there's other options for folks that are in that cost burdened place. We can only assume that within our own city, what what will help that cost burdening is to create more inventory. The challenge that I've learned through over the last year is that there's an assumption that building more units, more inventory and more multifamily specifically helps the affordability problem overall. And statistically, we have seen that that's not true. And so I think there's generally that conversation that has to be had is building more unit. Can we out, can we build our way out of this affordability problem? And the statistics nationwide are saying no. So we have to decide, is building more the solution? Or is more affordable housing the solution? Do we take what we have and make it more affordable in some way? And there are two very different ways to go about solving the problem, right? So I think that that's been something that's been really interesting, that's kind of made me change my mind, because I went into um this research on affordable housing when I first started this about a year and a half ago, thinking, oh, let's just figure out we should build more. Surely, the normal economic idea of more supply will affect demand and demand will affect supply, and that should work itself out. But interestingly enough, that's not what's happening in housing for a variety of reasons, because it's complex, right? I mean, you all attempted to go about this a variety of different ways and saw the complexity of how we even begin to answer the questions, I don't know. So one more quick question. Just to clarify, the American Community Survey is that voluntary, well, it's not technically voluntary, but it's a survey that the Census Bureau sends out on a monthly basis, right? And people are obligated to answer that survey. Do you have any more information on um how the surveys are done or how they? Because I don't know much about it.
Doc also will probably answer that question.
Note, Councilwoman, no, no one is technically obligated. You don't, it's not like the decennial census where they confirm that people have responded. So it's a sample that that's conducted. I was recently included in the sample. I felt super privileged about that. But so they do use not only um mail, but also text. So they're trying multiple kinds of modes to reach different types of citizens. And the battery of questions that they ask, I think, varies across the sample. As you all are probably familiar with, though, those samples are relatively small. They're not the full population like the decennial census. So the margins of error tend to be pretty high, and it becomes difficult. I know that you've all experienced the frustration of trying to use that in a decision making capacity, because it it becomes stale relatively quickly or it's not as accurate as we might like.
And to the extent, I think with data collection and Meridian actually like conducting its own survey, I think the intent of this project really is to bring some of the data that's already out there, that you have in your databases, that the Census Bureau and that the school district have. And bring that to y'all's attention so that you can think about, you know, what more data do we need? Because honestly, it's, I mean, it's not within our capabilities to conduct, you know, some type of, you know, scientifically accurate sampling or or surveying. And that can cost, you know, upwards of $50,000 to get even just a few hundred um, a few hundred folks in Meridian rep, surveyed in a representative sample. And so that's something that I think if the if the city wants to consider, we we'd be happy to, you know, continue to provide support on that. But I don't think that's that's not necessarily something that we can, we can do with our.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
Thank you for your presentation. It was it was very thorough. But you you got me alarmed at one point when you started talking about the number of homeless students and the numbers on the screen. And just quickly, I always get frustrated when I look at acts and different parts of our federal government that define things differently. And the CDC has a definition of homeless. That's vastly different than the McKinney Vento Act definition. I would have never thought that we would have listed, and I'm not, I'm not trying to say it's wrong, but I think it needs more explanation. But even people living with someone else in someone else's home under Vento or listed as homeless, it's not their home. But there's a lot of people in that group of homeless under McKinney Vento that that aren't the traditional definition of homeless. And before we alarm everybody that we've got all these homeless people, I I just almost want a little more transparency on how we're defining the term, because that really kind of shocked me. We all know visions of homelessness. We see it all the time on the news. We would never see this and think this was homeless. A little bit more transparency for everyone, I think, would also give you a lot more buy in for what homeless really is.
For those comments, so that is why, you know, we went through the definition according to McKinney Vento, because that is different than the CDC. Um, and that's for a couple of reasons. One is because there are children involved. And again, the outcomes for children who live in overcrowded conditions are not good. But the other part of that is that when people are doubled up, that is considered unstable or tenuous housing, because at any time, they could be asked to leave. And if they're asked to leave that residence, where do they go? And then we have the children we do have in Meridian who are living in hotels, who are in shelters or completely unhoused or living in cars. And we do have the numbers of those children as well. So we have to remember that that is why the McKinney Vento program operates the way it does, that we have very, a very vulnerable population, which is children that could be um immediately at any time under that other definition of homeless, which is they have nowhere to go. Because doubled up housing is unstable, inconsistent housing that can be pulled out from under a family at any time. And that is why the government labels it this, so that those children now fall under an umbrella, where someone in the school district at least is very aware and is trying to help their family get into stable housing, so they do not become homeless in the sense of having no shelter.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Um, I just wanted to um thank you guys for presenting to us today. And I can tell you, you did so much hard work to put this together. And it means a lot to us that you, you know, went through the effort of doing this for our city. So thank you. And I wanted to also thank Councilwoman Perro, because she is has been the most tenacious person in pursuing this topic, and I'm in awe of it. And she has just continued, even though it's like one of the hardest, most challenging topics to ever try to tackle. So I just wanted to say thanks for that.
All right. Thank you um as well. We appreciate you all being here and and maybe we'll be chatting some more again in the fall. Right, thank you. Also, we've reached the end of our.
Mr. Rendek, Councilman Holden.
Yeah, I moved that we adjourn our work session.
Motion adjourn all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, the guys have it, we are adjourned.
Council, we'll call the meeting order for the record. It is May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three at six oh two P M. We'll begin tonight's progress to council me with roll call tenants.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Overton.
Here.
Councilwoman Perro.
Here.
Councilman Borden.
Here.
Councilman Oakland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please rise and join us in the pledge. Next up is our community invocation, which tonight will be delivered by Pastor Ben Blakey. If you would all please join us in the community invocation or take this as a moment of silence and reflection. Good evening.
Our Father in heaven, hallowed be your name, your kingdom come, your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our debts as we also have forgiven our debtors and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Father, I lift these requests up to you on behalf of this city that your name would be hallowed and honored, that people would be free to gather and worship, that your will would be done, that this would be a place that is characterized by righteousness and justice, that you would provide for the needs of this city and its citizens, that this would be a place characterized by forgiveness, where each one of us is humble and realizes the forgiveness that we need and is eager to extend that forgiveness to others. And God, we pray that you would protect this community and deliver it from evil. God, that you would just work through even just our law enforcement, our fire department, that you would keep this city safe and protect it. God, we lift these things up to you. We pray for wisdom for these men and women who lead our city, and we ask your blessing upon this meeting tonight in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you. First time up is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Oakland.
Move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Second.
I have a motion of second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, I'm favor signified by saying aye.
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 Pose nay. Guys have it and the agenda is adopted. Mr. Quirk, will anyone sign up under public forum?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, then with that, we will move on to our action items this evening. Our first item up is a public hearing for King's Congregation Church, H. Two thousand and twenty-three dash zero zero one three. We will open this public hearing with staff comments from Sonia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The first item before you is a request for a development agreement modification. This site consists of two point three three acres of land. It's owned L O. Limited Office, and it's located at one one five zero East Pienza Street at the southeast corner of East Victory Road and South Mesa Way. This property was annexed back in two thousand and eight with the requirement of a development agreement. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is civic. The applicant is proposing to modify the existing development agreement to update the conceptual development plan and building elevations for the site and modify D A. Provision number five point one point six. The existing development agreement includes a plan for the first and second phases of the development. The first phase has been completed and included improvements to the existing church building, removal of the access point via Victory Road, a paved forty-one space parking lot with an emergency turnaround for the fire department off of Pienza Street, the installation of a landscape street buffer along East Victory Road, and a pressurized irrigation system. The second phase included a new forty-two thousand five hundred square foot church building with an additional fifty-two parking spaces and associated landscaping. The original plan there is on the left. The existing church is nearest to Victory Road, and the phase two church building is on the southern end of the property. The plan on the right is the proposed master plan. The proposed concept plan reduces the size of the new building from forty-two thousand to five hundred square feet to seventy-four hundred square feet and includes a reconfiguration of the site. The existing building will remain along with some of the existing parking. Parking is proposed where the new building was previously proposed on the southern end of the site. The design and building materials of the new building is proposed to change from a two-story to a single story and will include a dark gray asphalt shingled roof instead of a blue metal roof. White horizontal siding instead of stucco, stone veneer, wainscot is still proposed to coincide with the existing structure, and a white steeple is proposed. Although the proposed roofing material and color and siding materials differ from the existing structure, the main color, stone wainscot and roof pitch of the buildings are generally compatible and should be compatible with adjacent residential structures. Final design is required to comply with the design standards in the architectural standards manual. The previous development plan did not have an access via South Mesa Way along the west boundary of the site as the street had not yet been constructed at that time. The proposed access via Mesa Way will provide better connectivity and access with adjacent developments and streets. The jog in the access points from Mesa Way and Pienza Street, you can see here, Pienza Street comes in here at the east boundary and, excuse me, the east boundary, and then here at the west boundary, it connects to Mesa Way. And the jog in it should assist in slowing traffic and reducing cut through traffic through the site. In accord with this change, a modification is proposed to development agreement provision number five point one point six as follows. Direct access to Victory Road is prohibited. Access to this site shall be provided from East Pienza Street and South Mesa Way is the portion that was added. All other access points to and from the site are prohibited unless approved by A C. H. D. In the city of Meridian. The off-street parking proposed for the development exceeds the minimum U D. C. Standards by seventy-four spaces. Based on the overall square footage of the building, which is fourteen thousand three hundred nine twenty-nine square feet, a minimum of twenty-eight spaces are required. A total of one hundred and three spaces are proposed. A written testimony was received from Ryan McCauley, the applicant's representative. He is in agreement with the staff report, and staff is recommending approval for the staff report. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sonia. Council, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
Sonia, it looks like the existing building has directly west existing parking lot, and the new plan shows it. It looks like green space. Are they they're tearing out that parking lot and greening it up? Is that the plan?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borden, yes, that is correct.
Okay. Just checking. Thanks.
Council, any additional questions for staff? Right, is the applicant here? Like to come forward? Say your name and address for the record and be recognized for fifteen minutes.
Ryan McCauley. Four eight six eight, Urban Place.
You have any any comments you'd like to add? Okay, council, any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Squirt, do you have anybody sent up on this item?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, there was not. Last I checked, I've not been to the back of the room, though.
Is there anybody who would like to provide testimony on this item? So come on up and set your name and address for the record, be recognized for up to three minutes, and just have to choose one of the mics.
Thank you. My name is Mike Bierman, twelve oh four East Pienza Street in Meridian, just down from the church. I don't have a testimony. I just have some questions, and I'm sorry if there are been answered, but Pienza Street, is that going to be a through street? Didn't look like it, but a through street to the street just to the west of the church. Parking lot.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I can respond to that. Pienza Street is not being continued as a public street through this site. It does kind of stub into this site, and there is a turnaround, and then it's just a private parking lot through this site, and then it goes out to Mesa further to the south, to the west.
Anyone that came through the parking lot would be doing so basically illegally because they're using the parking lot to come over to Pienza, is that?
Well, it's not public right of way. It is a private property, so they they shouldn't be, but.
Okay. My only concern, we live on Pienza, and we kind of like that dead end street, but I was just curious about that.
Yeah, as I mentioned, there's a there's a bit of a jog in it, so hopefully that'll kind of keep people from using it as a cut through.
Yeah, and then how tall is the bill? Is the phase two the one that's going to have the taller building, or is it going to be phase one's going to be two-story building?
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to respond?
If you if you can, yes.
Thank you.
If not, we can save it for the applicant, whichever we prefer.
I don't have the exact height of the structure, but it is a single-story structure, whereas the previous concept plan was for a two-story structure.
Which one's a two?
So if you look at the overhead here, the one on the right is the proposed concept plan, and the one on the left was the original two-story. So the size is reduced significantly from forty-two thousand to basically seventy-four hundred square feet overall.
Hey, council, any questions? Okay. Mr. Quirk, was any any man that did sign up?
Mr. Mayor, no.
Okay, is there anybody else that would like to provide testimony on this item? Then would the applicant like to make any final comments? Applicant is waving final comments. Counsel, what's your preference desires or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion of second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, I'm favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The guys have it. The public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
It all appears to be in order. I don't see that the changes are detrimental in any way, and seems additive to the community. With that in mind, I move that we, after considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, I move to approve file number H. Two thousand and twenty-three dash zero zero one three as presented in the staff report for today's hearing date.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one pro.
To second the motion, but also make a quick comment. I just want to say, I think.
Have a motion of second. Any discussion? Yes, Council pro.
My apologies. I just want to say it looks like it's going to be a beautiful building, and we are big supporters of our faith community here at the city, so I'm excited to see how this benefits your neighbors, and I love it when we see places of faith that are new to the, you know, that that's not, you're not new, but it it's going to be somewhere you're going to be able to to benefit your congregation. So congratulations on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
Yeah, just to note, for the gentleman who's up here, Pienza, I like the layout because if you're looking up that street, you're just going to see a church building and nothing else. It doesn't look like, oh, I can make it to that street, other street. If you drive through the parking lot and make that wind around. So I think that's a that's a good design that should be very helpful.
Council, any additional comments? Then if not, call the roll.
Mr. Mayor, Strater.
Aye.
Overton.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Borden.
Aye.
Oakland.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Thank you very much. So next item up is I am to a public hearing for modern craftsman Franklin, H. Two thousand and twenty-two dash zero zero seven nine. We will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The next applications before you, there's several, request for a development agreement modification, annexation and zoning, conditional use permit, and a preliminary plat. This site consists of eleven point four seven acres of land. It's owned R. U. T. In Ada County and R. Fifteen in the city, and is located at four five four zero four four nine zero and four four two zero West Franklin Road. The western portion of this site at forty-five forty West Franklin Road was previously annexed in this city with the Compass Charter School East Expansion Project, and that is this little little piece right here where my pointer's at. The future land use map designation for this property is medium-high density residential, which calls for density. which calls for densities ranging from eight to fifteen units per acre with a target density of twelve units per acre in the ten-mile interchange specific area plan. The applicant is requesting a modification to the existing development agreement to remove the property at forty-five forty West Franklin Road. Again, that west small parcel uh from the agreement for the uh purpose of including it in the proposed multifamily residential development and the new development agreement associated with the proposed annexation. The applicant proposes to annex the eastern two parcels consisting of ten point two nine acres of land with an R fifteen medium-high-density residential zoning district. A multifamily residential development with a mix of housing types is proposed at a gross density of ten point six units per acre, consistent with the medium-high-density residential future land use designation in the comprehensive plan. A development agreement is recommended as a provision of annexation that includes the west parcel proposed to be removed from the existing development agreement. Uh, that area was planned to develop with a parking lot and a sports field for the adjacent charter school. A preliminary plat is proposed consisting of one building lot and one other lot on eleven point four seven acres of land in the R fifteen zoning district. Right-of-way is proposed to be dedicated with the plat for the extension of West Aviator Street, a collector's street across the northwest corner of the site in accord with the master street map. Access is proposed via the Collector Street, Aviator, with a driveway access via West Franklin Road and Arterial Street at the southwest corner of the site. The driveway is required to be located along the west property line for shared access with the property to the west. Private streets were approved by the director for internal access and for addressing purposes. Street buffer landscaping is required along the Collector and Arterial Streets in accord with UDC standards. The Purdum Gulch Drain lies off-site along the east boundary of the property within a one-hundred-foot-wide easement on land owned by Napa Meridian Irrigation District. The easement encroaches on this property at the northeast corner of the site. A conditional use permit is proposed for a multifamily residential development consisting of one hundred and twenty-two dwelling units in the R fifteen zoning district. A mix of housing types with one, two and three-bedroom units is proposed consisting of single-family residential detached, attached duplex and townhomes. Because all units will be on a single lot rather than individual lots, uh, it's considered a multifamily residential development. All units will be for rent rather than individually owned. A minimum of one point nine acres of qualified open space and five site amenities are required to meet the minimum standards. An updated common open space exhibit um was submitted as shown since the commission hearing that depicts a total of two point one five acres of common open space that complies with and exceeds the minimum standards. Site amenities are proposed as follows from each of the required categories. Quality of life, um, a clubhouse and a dog park and a waste station is required with that. A um open space, a community garden is proposed. From the recreation category, a swimming pool, internal walking trails, children's play structure. And from the multi-modal category, charging stations for electric vehicles, which meet and exceed the UDC standards. Off-street parking is proposed for the development that exceeds and meets the UDC standards. A minimum of two hundred and forty-eight parking spaces are required, a total of two hundred and sixty are proposed. Conceptual building elevations were submitted for the proposed structures within the development as shown. Building materials appear to consist of a stucco-like material with wood look lap siding and stone accents with ash asphalt shingle roofs. Final design should comply with the multifamily design standards listed in Architectural Standards Manual and the traditional neighborhood design guidelines in the ten-mile plan for the medium-high-density residential future land use designation. The proposed conceptual elevations are not approved and require additional revisions prior to final approval. The commission um did recommend approval of the proposed applications with conditions. I'll just go through a summary of the commission hearing. Um, Elizabeth Cockraths from Givens Persley testified in favor along with David Bailey from Bailey Engineering. No one testified in opposition or commented on the application. Written testimony was received from Shannon Ely, um, Baron Properties, and that is the applicant. The applicant requested a few changes to the staff report, which have been addressed by staff and the commission as noted in the commission recommendation in the staff report. The key issues of discussion by the commission, again, these issues have been discussed. Um, the issues, excuse me, that were discussed have been resolved. Commission changes to the staff recommendation, um, are as follows. At staff's request, a condition was added for a sidewalk to be provided along the south side of West Fresh Powder Lane on the north side of the common area where the community center is located for pedestrian connectivity and safety. Second, at the applicant's request, um, the street names were updated, or the updated plans. Third, at the applicant's request, uh, modification to condition B two nine for the language proposed by the applicant and agreed upon by staff. The only um, isn't, the only outstanding issue before council tonight, and it's not so much an outstanding issue, but staff did request that the applicant share details on um what type of public art is proposed and the location for such. Written testimony has been received since the commission hearing from the applicant's representative, Elizabeth Cockraths, in agreement with the commission recommendation. No other uh letters of testimony have been provided from adjacent residents or neighbors. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I have two questions. Um, my first question, uh, in the staff report, there was a comment that sixty-five percent of the application does not follow street-oriented design, which is called for in the ten-mile specific plan. Um, so I just wanted to talk about that a little bit. What kind of changes would be needed to bring this into more compliance with the ten-mile specific area plan? I know porches are a big part of it, you guys talked about that pretty specifically, but is there anything else that we would expect to see?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, counsel, um, you nailed it pretty much. Um, the, the porches are um really something that's desired for traditional neighborhood design in the ten-mile area and there, there isn't much to speak of on the, except for the townhome units. So that is something that we'll be looking for.
Mr. Mayor, if I can.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Thank you. Um, so is this something that you would work with the applicant later on? Because I know you mentioned like the um conceptual design, you would expect to see revisions. Uh, I mean, is that something that we would normally work with the applicant on later? Or is this something we expect upfront? Like, uh, we, we've seen projects before where they don't meet the ten-mile specific plan and they don't get approval. So I just wanted to sort of understand, but you just made a comment about conceptual designer visions. Um, how does that fit together and uh, you know, how far is it off of meeting our standard for the ten-mile area plan?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilwoman Schrader, um, the, the details of the design are typically handled with the designer review step. Um, application at staff level. It, it is more ideal to have these elevations revised prior to council approval. Um, I have not received revised uh updated plans from the applicant, I did not ask for any. Um, just to specify that, but um, yeah, it is more ideal for you guys to see what's being approved out there, but it is, it is something that we um typically handle with designer view.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I'm not sure I'm totally comfortable just because like we've had several applications that we've denied because he didn't meet the ten-mile specific area plan. So the applicant heard that, so hopefully they'll address that in their presentation. My second question is, um, there is a condition B two nine, which I had reviewed, but I didn't fully understand the rationale for this change, besides that there was a precedent for other projects in which we've done this. Um, if the applicant could specifically address that, and I don't know, Sonya, if you have any comment on it, basically, is this typical for other projects, not their projects, but other projects to request this sort of a change in the language?
Um, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, it's, it's a public works um condition. I think the applicant can better address the, the response to that, thank you.
Fair enough.
Council, any other questions for staff? Okay, then would the applicant like to come forward? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name's Elizabeth Kekaritz, I'm with Givens Persley at six oh one Bannock. With me tonight is Matt Riggs, Greg Hector, um, of Baron Properties, as well as other members of our local development team. Um, we would really want to thank Sonya and Bill on this project and the entire development staff for their assistance. It's been a really collaborative process and actually, um, Councilmember Schraders, I'll get into it. We really worked, we worked really hard with staff in order to create more of a boulevard-like feel on this really uniquely shaped property that is kind of awkward to get in and through. Um, we've gone through multiple iterations of this and we actually, we're really proud of where we've landed on this. Um, just a brief, whoa, gone way too fast. Just a brief um Baron Properties overview, it's been a little while since they've been here. They were originally founded in nineteen eighty-three by Jeff Riggs and they have developed and operated over a hundred twenty-five residential communities throughout the Mountain West. Um, their residential developments provide high-end amenities in a community that's operated and maintained by Baron from the get-go, from the beginning to the end. They own the property, they build the buildings and then they manage the property going forward so that residents can enjoy these communities without any maintenance or upkeep that's associated with home ownership, but they can live in a community that lives and feels and works much like a single-family residential home-owned community. Most recently, they have done two projects here in um Meridian. The first was Black Cat, which was the first of its kind of Treasure Valley. I know it certainly was one of the first or the first one that our office worked on that really brought in this sort of concept. Um, Baron believes that this high-end unique product type with the mix of detached and attached um rental units with all of the high-end amenities was something that was missing here and it's really played out. Um, this, the Black Cat has, phase one is done. It's started leasing up and it has been receiving rave reviews from the tenants, saying this has been a great place to live. Phase two is just starting to lease up and they expect phases three and four to be at, done by the end of the summer, beginning of the fall. The other similar development is ten-mile, which is a hundred thirty-five units. That's also phase one is finishing up. And at least they've signed at least a dozen leases for this development. They expect to have complete build-out by the end of the summer. One thing that's really nice about working with Baron is that they have been really active in the community and with the local chapter of the National Apartment Association. They recently had their annual event and Baron Properties brought home four awards. Um, these awards are voted on by the membership, which includes most of the uh are recognizable, many of our recognizable prominent multifamily owners and developers in the valley. Um, the Black Cat Project received the Property of Excellence in Meridian Award. So, moving on to the development that's before you, to help orient you, um, as Sonya mentioned, we're located directly north of Franklin, very close to Black Cat Road and southeastern, directly east of the Compass Charter School. We're located really close to the northern edge of the ten-mile interchange specific area and there've recently been several developments approved in the direct vicinity, including Alamar directly to the east, Aviator to the north and New Kirk to the northeast. Um, this will be another really high-end Baron property. It, I believe it'll be going by the name Colorado Ridge, which is going to bring another one of these high-end communities to Meridian. Um, tonight, as Sonya mentioned, we're requesting annexation, zoning, CUP and a DA amendment. It has a hundred and twenty-two units on approximately eleven point five acres. And it, we really have worked hard to collaboratively design this with input from staff and to try to meet the ten-mile um interchange special area plan. Um, you can see you come in off the south, our primary entrance, one of our two entrances is coming in off the south off of Franklin Road, um, where then you will take a direct right to go in through the development and then you head north. And I'll show you in the pictures here in a minute of the Boulevard Line Street that was designed to match with the standards in the ten-mile plan. Ultimately, you pop out on that onto Aviator Street, which is in the process of being extended right now. There is, the R fifteen, it offers a wide variety of housing styles and types. Um, we have our one, two and three-bedroom offerings, they're in detached homes and duplexes and six-plexes. Um, you can see here the lime green, which is a little hard with my eyes to see. It are the townhome units, there's also the purple dots are the one-bedroom, one-bath duplexes. There are eighteen two-bedroom, two-bath bungalows, which are standalone and six three-bedroom, two-bath bungalows in red, which are also standalone. And those um two-bedroom, two-bath bungalows are in bright green. So, talking about the TMI SAP, it focuses really on three elements, land use, transportation and design. And I'll talk about each of these briefly in turn. This land is designated medium-high-density residential and most of it is already appropriately or part of it is already appropriately zoned R fifteen. It's generally located in and around more intensely developed areas. Directly to the west across Black Cat is designated low-density employment and mixed employment, which provides convenient access to future employment centers for the maximum number of residents. Within one mile of the site, as you know, it's really busy and bustling. There's property designated mixed employment, high-density employment, industrial and commercial, making this site ideally situated for the unique housing type where residents can truly live and work where they live. Um, within this, the R fifteen zoning, um, and the medium-high-density residential, um, single-family detached townhomes and two-family duplexes are, are all recommended housing types here. Um, although they may be rental units, they still live and work like those types of units. The debt, target density is twelve units per acre, we are at ten point six units per acre here. One thing that the TMI, this is really um discusses is there's a focus on the transportation. Um, we worked with the property owner to the north um to provide Aviator Drive, which comes through and it'll cut through the upper top corner of the property and extend onto their property. It's primarily going to be on the subdivision to the north, but we've been working with them to be able to get that complete here. Um, the owner to the north owns the lion's share of the property and so we're just entering into some agreements for them to construct that across the Baron property here. Um, we also recognize that ACHD wanted to limit the access points onto Franklin Road, which is one of the reasons why we have that shared access that will provide access to the, um, as the properties to the west redevelop. Um, there's a, um, oh, what is it, Sunset, is it a gardening store right there? And that will be, they'll be able to have a shared access and also close down some of their access points once they redeveloped. Additionally, the TMI SAP originally showed a connector sort of tracking the Purdum Drain. How the properties have actually um worked out is there really is now this going from Avi, going from Black Cat to Franklin that C to B on this map, there's really, that's where that connection has ultimately sort of ended up as these properties have developed. So that is still in there. Street design and product orientation. The TMI SAP focuses on complete streets that work for motorists, bus riders, bicyclists and pedestrians. This is a really long, narrow property and so a lot of things that would, might work in other places aren't going to work here. And so what the, what Baron did is they worked closely with staff in designing this long boulevard that goes throughout the property. Um, as you can see, all of the townhomes along here and the properties, they front onto the street. All of the parking is tucked in behind, um, and there's also some on All of the parking is tucked in behind and there's also some on-street parking. These are relatively narrower boulevard design. The drive lane is 24 feet with nine feet of parallel parking on each side, followed by the eight-foot carriage strip with trees, a five-foot sidewalk, and then it's five feet to the homes along the street front. And they do all have their front entrances on here. And that street design was taken from the TMISAP. I think it exactly matches or it almost exactly matches the street designs in the TMISAP. All the garages were moved to the rear to get off of this main boulevard street running through there. There are still garages located in other places throughout the property, but as a multifamily residential development, it's hard to really, without having the formal streets that would exist in like a single-family residential, to meet all of those requirements. And so we feel that this does a really good job of providing that boulevard, that central people are on to, fronting onto this main street throughout. This also incorporates by having crosswalks and the landscaped roundabouts or the crosswalks or the, I guess they're not roundabouts if you're not turning off of them. It also does really help with the traffic calming through here. The property is also conveniently located on VRT Routes 40 and 42. Okay, the building details there, although there, we had just had a few very brief conversations, but we are absolutely willing to continue to work with staff and read and define these and work through these to make sure that what we're coming forward with ultimately does match what is the what is being requested and looked at here. It was our understanding that these were really close to being what, after working with staff on this for, I believe, almost over a year, that these were really close to what was being looked at. It's really high-quality construction. All the units are one and two stories. There's a variety of roof lines. There's porches and frontages and front, like as you can see on these, these townhome units, they all have sort of a front grassy area fronting onto the street. One of the things that we have not included is that is their private open space, but it really works and acts like sort of their own private open space really fronting right onto this boulevard street. All of, as requested by the plan, all mechanical units are screened with fences. In addition, we have usable front porches. Every unit adjacent has a porch or a front entryway. The garages are all loaded from the rear alleyway. They're not visible from the primary street. This is a traditional neighborhood design standard with the landscaped parkway with trees. There's a diversity of residential styles and types. It appeals to a wide range of people with a variety of price points. There's also this compact walkable nature. There's a lot of pathways throughout that make it easy to get to and from the various buildings on the site. We will go through the design review process, of course, and we'll continue to fine-tune these buildings with staff. Here you can see one of the one-bedroom, one-bath duplexes. These have an open floor plan with an emphasis on natural light. Each have a small private fenced backyard and only one shared wall. They're highly desirable. Wow, this goes back. The two- and three-bedroom townhomes, we do believe these really do meet the design elements of the TMISAP. There's the roof parapets with the unique toppings. There's elements on the facade of these flat-roofed buildings and attention has been paid to the use of articulation, the signs, details, and inlays on these units. Again, they're made with high-quality materials. Screen mechanical units. Those have, the three-bedroom units are on the end, the two-bedroom units are in between. Upper balconies and lower porches plus that private little small green space. All over the place. I apologize. The interior amenities, as I mentioned, these are really nice. They're highly desirable. There's private patios, tuck-under and attached garages, 10 to 12-foot ceilings, spacious open living floor plans, just really all of your high-end amenities that you'd be looking for in in-unit washers and dryers. The community is where these properties really shine. It provides many amenities, including the pool, this attached grill, the playground attached to the pool area, the dog park, the EV charging station, all of those things. There are detached garages with storage that are available for rent. So you can also have, if you don't have parking with your unit, tuck-under parking, you can find parking. There is also storage available. And the one thing I guess I'll just finish with is the amount of open space. One of the things that Barron prides itself on is all of the open space. That there is the community open space and then there's also, they do the private residential space for, so each unit has its own private residential space that on the townhome units is a little bit smaller, but on the other units, the duplexes have 138 square feet of patio and 126 feet of yard. Up to the two-bedroom units have 153 square foot patios plus 425 square feet of private yards. In addition, we have confirmed that all services are available and we meet all of the annexation and zoning standards. With that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
That's Melissa Schrader.
Thank you. Thank you, Elizabeth. First of all, shout out for the matrix. The first time I've seen a matrix like that for zoning. That was really interesting. So I appreciated you providing that. A lot of things I like about it. The one piece I'm not totally following is the porches and the street-oriented design. I get it that the boulevard meets that. Can you go through the product that doesn't meet the standard, like that doesn't really have a porch or what I guess our internal staff considers to be the appropriate type of porch?
I think, so let's go to we have, this is the front to the one-bedroom, one-bath duplexes, which runs along the street. And these, I believe, and we've not had any recent conversations. We actually thought that these generally complied and that we were in pretty good shape. And we would say that this generally complies with the street-oriented design. I think that Sonya may have a different view on it, but it does have the front entryway walking in there, fronting up to the street. There's the parallel parking in front of it. I also think, Councilmember Strater, that some of it is we focused on the boulevard versus some of the other areas maybe don't, we really have focused on trying to meet the Ten Mile Plan through this area, but given the constraints of this lot, we couldn't do two boulevards or other things of that nature that might be called for in the TMISAP.
Mr. Mayor.
That's Melissa Schrader.
I mean, just to play devil's advocate, so it looks denser to me along the boulevard, right? And, you know, this is probably one area where I would advocate for a little bit more density because, to your point, this touches our two bus lines. This is in a transportation corridor. This is an area that we have planned to have more density. You know, would you, you know, I guess, just curious, so how many single-family homes you sort of don't meet that standard? And then, Mr. Mayor, at some point, if you'd permit staff to, you know, kind of comment a little bit back on on the single-family product and what changes could be made to better meet the Ten Mile-specific recommendations?
Mayor, Councilman Schrader. So, we have a row of, we, this was found to be from Barron really the best planning mix, but we have a row of town, ah! We have, this one works best. We have a row of townhomes all the way down that eastern boundary, which is a little more dense, and there's 42 townhome units in total. Then there are 56 one-bedroom, one-bath duplexes, 18 of the two-bedroom, two-bath bungalows, and six three-bedroom, two-bath bungalows. Remembering that this is the sort of community where Barron has tried to focus on being able to, it's sort of the next step up from your first rental community that you live in, maybe when you get out of college. Or a lot of the people that live here are baby boomers who are retiring, who don't want homeownership, but they want to be able to live that way. And so that's how this unit mix was ultimately settled on, is that it seemed to make the most sense to appeal to the widest variety of people. But, and that's where we ended up with this.
Mr. Mayor.
That's Melissa Schrader.
One more question for the applicant and then if it's possible, if staff has any further comment about the design guideline.
Staff is welcome to weigh in any point in time.
Perfect. I guess I'm just trying to find it right, write it down. Oh, you mentioned a variety of price points. Can you elaborate about that? What is the, you don't have to tell us the exact prices. I wouldn't expect you to share that type of information. But what's the sort of differential between the different products expected to be? Understanding it's a projection and not something that we would hold you to, but we're very interested in increasing the range of housing options in Meridian and we're focusing on affordability and that middle housing is a gap for us. So you could comment on that.
Mayor Sinison, Commissioner, Councilmember Schrader, I will actually let Greg Hector is going to be speaking later and I'll let him address that.
Fair enough.
Mr. Mayor.
That's Melissa Pro.
Looking at me, so you always know I'll have a question.
I know where I'm going first on almost every applicant.
Thank you, Councilwoman Schrader. You did get several of my questions answered through, through the ones that you had. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the ratio of one-bedroom to the two and three bedrooms and kind of how you came to the determination of what was, what would work in this area. Obviously, this area of the valley tends to have more families that move into it in general. Just curious if you can comment on the ratio and and whether the statistics that were used, because they're, they're a large corporation that does this in a variety of locations, if the statistics that were used for determining those were based on our local market or not? And/or if it was just a matter of limited geography that really led towards that ratio? And then also, second question along with that is, I'm very familiar with build-to-rent projects and no matter whether it's individual units, multifamily apartments, whatever it is, there's a higher number of vehicles because, you know, folks tend to co-lease together. Even if, even if a property management company doesn't allow for subleasing, you do tend to see more vehicles per unit. So if you can address that with there only being 12 additional spaces.
Mayor, Councilmember Pro, I will start with your second question first. As far as parking goes, there are the additional 12 spaces. One thing that is not included and cannot be included is the, every one of the townhomes, in addition to the internal parking, they do have an apron that would allow two additional parking spaces. Those don't count under the city code, but those, there are additional parking spaces in that way. And so when you take that 48 times two, that actually would come to 96 additional, potentially additional spaces on this, which really does help alleviate some of the parking concerns and issues there. As far as the ratio of units, I, there, I think that several things went into deciding on this particular unit mix. One is that they are very popular with the, the younger individuals who are looking to move into this area with all of the new development going on along the interstate, Placity and some of those other tech companies that are coming in. Those are people who are making, who are, tend to be tech workers, a little bit younger, oftentimes taking these first jobs. They're single. They want sort of more of a freestanding place, but they aren't ready for, and this way they can really be on their own for singles and just couples. And then the bigger ones do tend to have more families in them. But across the board in all of Barron's developments, they have found that there really are fewer families and young kids in these developments than what, than what would exist in other types of similar developments. But also I know that we have both Greg Hector and then Matt Riggs, one of the owners is here and they can both speak to you on that as well.
That's Melissa Pro.
Question please. Thank you. That being said, tell us then about the playground as an amenity versus maybe having a different amenity that would gear more towards who you believe will rent the units?
Mayor, Councilmember Pro, although that is true that we think that it will be, there will be fewer, I think it's, they believe it's always important to have amenities that speak to everyone and this is one that whether there's five kids or 15 kids, that it's a great amenity to have. And that also there are amenities, there's things like the community gardens and the pool with the lounge area and the hot tub that speak more to the higher end also, and to kids, but also the picture of the pool and the hot tub, it looks more grown up than in some other places.
Mr. Mayor.
That's Melissa Hugland.
Questions, Elizabeth? For the, the street on the east side, that is the backloaded garage. Is that correct?
Did I get that right? It is. Yeah.
And do we, do we have adequate distance from the garage door to the street to park a vehicle? Or is that a different arrangement there?
Mayor, Commissioner, Councilmember Hugland, there is adequate space to park there.
And follow-up, Mr. Mayor?
That's Melissa.
And for the, the easement that you're getting or however you're dealing with the property to connect to Aviator and that area, are you working with the developer, timing-wise? How will this development phase and be created? And, you know, we know what we've approved over there to the north and also to the east, but timing of that's kind of critical for everything to work together. Are you guys talking about that or where, what's the plan for that?
Mayor, Councilmember Hugland, we are, we've been exchanging drafts of contracts all week and all last week with the developer to the north, who is ready to start moving as soon as they possibly can because they're really the key for getting Aviator Street extended to their property and then crossing the drain so it continues on. But those have been ongoing discussions and our office has been working on contracts for it.
Council, any additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Thank you. Can you just address the language that you all requested within the public works section that, I don't remember now, 2.9B, I believe?
Mayor, Councilmember Schrader. Absolutely. So that was at a request because that is how we've been able to, in the past, we've had this condition amended in slightly different ways that have been approved, but this is how it's actually worked, at least with Barron and with the Public Works Department. Is this, that's the point at which they are approving the developments before that you cannot receive your C of O until the final plat is filed. And this just sort of clarifies some of what has actually been going on in practice with them.
Mr. Mayor.
That's Melissa Schrader.
I think that's helpful. So it sounds like maybe the standard language doesn't really reflect the facts on the ground. Is that what you're saying?
I, at least as far as the Barron ones go, I would agree with that.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Cork, we have anyone sent to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay. Is there anybody present that would like to provide testimony on this item? If you'd like to come forward? And if there's anybody online that would like to provide testimony, please use the raise your hand feature. If you can say your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Susan Luke and I am one of the founders and administrators for Compass Public Charter School. So I just have a couple of questions, maybe two, that we thought about. We're very excited to have neighbors and to have such a beautiful neighbor. We're excited about that. As you know, Aviator Street is a congestion issue. And so, um, our thought would be, we didn't know if the city would put up no parking signs on the side of that road to help with the traffic flow while the construction is going on. But particularly when we get to our arrival and our dismissal, I'm a little bit nervous for my elementary kids walking down that sidewalk while we have construction going on. Um, and then the other thought, I'm not sure how this, and maybe this is something that I'm not aware of, that I need to go through a different outlet. But the, the little road that connects to what we already use as our bus lane is long. Just wondering if that would have a stop sign for sure, so that we have our buses that go from Franklin into our loop. If they would have the right of way instead of the traffic coming out of the, the new development. So those are my only thoughts.
We do have Kristin Zelman from ACHD on, um, I don't know if she can speak directly to those, if those would be comments afterwards.
Mr., Mr., sorry, I have a delay. Mr. Mayor, this is Kristy from ACDV. Can she re-specify what her request are? I couldn't hear very well.
So our, our concern is just about the, the traffic, the allowable parking on the sides of Aviator Street. So right now there's a partial bike lane, but there's no part, there's no signs that indicate no parking. So we get a lot of vehicles from the apartments and construction vehicles that park along that road. And as we increase construction, our concern is that we won't have the ability to use that road for the traffic that we need for dismissal, for parent pickup, and for our students who use the back parking lot to park at the school. Then my second concern is the, the little road that connects the development to the road that we use for our buses that come off of Franklin. If the buses would have the right of way and the people coming out, the vehicles coming out of the subdivision, if they would have the stop sign.
Okay, sorry. Um, now I think I've got my audio under control. It was being kind of a pain. So I can, I need to take a look at Aviator to see if no parking is allowed there, if that is the setup. I can have our traffic look at that. If, if no parking is supposed to be on the street due to on-street signed bike lanes, then it, we should have it signed that way. So I can have our traffic division take a look at that. And as far as a stop sign from this development, because it looks like it, it stubs to property adjacent to them and not through to where the school is going, if I'm looking at this correctly. When that extension goes through, we would work with the adjacent development on their design and likely have some type of stop controlled. Depending on what the, what's being proposed there, it's hard for me to comment on a future connection to the driveway without that develop, that, that property being redeveloped.
Thank you. That addresses my issues.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Hugland.
Just, Susan, if you don't mind, I want to make sure we are talking about the same things and we're not in different places. So in that lower left of the map that we see up on the screen, which comes off of Franklin, and you got the two trees kind of in the middle of that street. So it's the far western edge of that lower flag of the wrong-sided L. So you're talking about if someone comes off of Franklin and is going to the school, making that turn, you want that street coming out of the development to have some sort of stop?
Yes, that's what I was thinking, because our buses come off of Franklin, because it's a right, that right turn only. And it would be really challenging for us to have to have the buses stop instead of having them have the right of way.
Great. And that's something we can ask the applicant, because I think those are, that's a private street. So we can, we can talk to the applicant about that, get their, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
Ma'am, would you mind coming back up? Ma'am?
Sorry.
Voices in my brain, so. Thank you very much for being here.
You're welcome.
We've had a lot of development along this corridor, as you know. And I have lived in this area just behind Compass for 12 years, very familiar with the traffic flows through here. Just curious if you could share with us if there's anything else that you are having concerns with, with, of course, this application, which is going to directly connect to the school, which is kind of unique. It's very rare to have schools that have two roads that come off of major arterials go into this essentially school property. Oftentimes they go around, but this, this, you know, really coming into the school property in a sense. Can you talk to us about concerns that you have with additional traffic for your school and your students? Or anything, is there anything else that you want to share with us in this regard? Because we do have two other developments that are going to be using Aviator beside this that are being built.
So my two other thoughts would be the railroad that is just north of Aviator Street on Black Cat. Having that every person stop is problematic. An arm would be a whole lot better, so that the traffic is, it flows a little bit easier. And then we've worked really, really hard with our stakeholders at the school to ask them to turn right onto Black Cat from Aviator, so that they're not turning left to go south. And we don't have control like we wish we did, but we're going to have even less control. And so if that really is an issue, then I would propose some kind of ACHD cone or barrier or something, so it's not available for people to turn left. Because that's the part that's going to get pretty tricky pretty fast, is if we have the railroad where everybody's stopping, and then we have cars turning left, right, left and right. That's going to be pretty crazy. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else would like to provide testimony on this item? Okay, then, are you testifying, are you the applicant to close?
I am the applicant.
If I'm, I'm inviting the applicant up to close then, if we have no of them further to testify. Be the applicant with their 10 minutes for closure. It's a part of the applicant team. So I'm inviting the applicant to come up to close and use your 10 minutes for those purposes.
Okay. Uh, yeah, thanks, everyone. Uh, my name is Matthew Riggs, 529 West Fordham in Eagle. Couple of things wanted to cover. I thank you, Elizabeth and staff for doing so much work on this so far. Some questions were brought up that I think, you know, I could speak to pretty well. Before I get there, you know, Elizabeth spent some time on our other two projects here that we've delivered the first phases on. And she emphasized those awards, because they're pretty meaningful, you know, that was really recognized. The Black Cat and Chindon site was recognized, you know, by our peers as really the premier rental community in the state of Idaho. And we're really proud of it being the first one we've done and the first of hopefully, you know, multiple, multiple that we'll do in the city of Meridian. So just want to say, you know, and highlight that it was similar to these projects, this one, and then the next one we're talking about tonight. It was a lot of planning and a lot of, a lot of man-hours that went into these projects. And I think what's coming out the other end relative to Bill and Sonia and their team is, is really quality elevated stuff. So that's what we've tried to produce here in this modern craftsman brand. It is, you know, a wide range of rental options. You know, it's probably pushing $500 from the entry level rental unit up to the premier largest units. So things have gotten more expensive here. You know, we have owned and operated the Redtail Apartments and in Meridian for the last, you know, pushing five years now. And really proud of that project and, and thought that there was a way to complement the existing housing stock here with this modern craftsman stuff. So on Black Cat and Chindon and on 10 Mile and Pine, our other two sites, they really open up and live on the ground quite nicely. You know, each building on this, it's, it's pretty subtle on, on this site plan. But each building is oriented and jogs in a way that even between buildings, it feels like you have, you know, boutique pocket parks and, and really it's just a nice experience getting from your car to the, to the front of the door. You know, at our other two sites, and this probably speaks to the front porch question. You know, and I, I think our intent there is absolutely to, to provide a livable, usable, you know, in code and within standard size of porch. And, you know, to the, to the end that we're, we're actually putting spickets on the front of these homes. And on the first 70 leases that we've signed across our two communities so far, got about 50 people living on those other two sites, they're using the front porches a lot. There's, there's chairs, there's, you know, all sorts of plants and other stuff on, on those. And that is absolutely, absolutely the intent here as well. You know, as it relates to the specific plan area, you know, I don't know the detail like our team. And I think that was what we were alluding to with staff, that if anything is, you know, needs to be enhanced relative to what we've already put on the ground and tweaks need to be made, we'd, we'd be standing by to make those. Um, on the unit mix side, that was another good question. You know, we're seeing, like Elizabeth has said, a pretty broad range of, of consumers and residents, if you will. You have a lot of medical profession, people moving in, you know, a lot of nurses, that side of things. We've seen quite a few graduate students lease up at 10 Mile and Pine or other projects so far. You know, a lot of transitioning people that are new to town, have town, have homes under construction. And then a lot of, a lot of the baby boomer that moves down, that has family in the area that's here, maybe part-time around the year, maybe has an RV and, and, you know, gets away during the summer, what have you. That, that's a pretty common profile. And that is where a lot of the amenity stuff and, and our focus there is, has integrated. Okay, you know, what does the young family and, you know, young woman who works, you know, with us, watching our three kids on the weekends? And, and, and every evening, right? She, she's a consumer of this product along with her grandparents. So the, the tot lot, the playgrounds, I, I think are something that are integral, that, that we would want on all of our sites. You know, the grandparents side of this is, is, is pretty key. And I think that they like the ability to, you know, to have, to have their grandchildren over. Same goes for the, uh, you know, the newly forming households or growing households that are living in this type of community, you know, that maybe don't want, uh, you know, a second or third story apartment, but aren't quite ready for homeownership. This is perfect for them, you know, the dog owners, it's perfect for them. All these, all these units have dog doors. And they're being used on all of our projects so far. You know, the pool even has a zero entry. So our, our operations and product team has gotten into the demographics of who's using it, what do they like about it? And our Redtail Apartments project has zero entry pool, and it is a major hit. And so that leads to, hey, the community, the market is saying these type of things, albeit, you know, additive in costs, these type of things are what the consumer wants. So, um, you know, we're adding these, we're really not, you know, cutting corners on what's being delivered here. You know, I, I, I would say, and I'd stress that it, it, it's a walkable pedestrian friendly community that, that, that opens up, you know, quite a bit for internal, you don't need to leave the site living. And then you have a mile down the road, all sorts of services and growth. So, you know, this is a good option in our mind for the, the people that are moving into town and that are, you know, going to work every day, you know, several miles either to the east or to the west. I mean, we've seen over the last year, what's, what's been approved in this area and this corridor, you know, from the employment side, you know, to the south side of Franklin. And we just think this is going to be, you know, one of those projects, big employers, you know, drive through when they're thinking about Meridian as a place to call home. So we're proud of it. Um, you know, we do think it, it lives well. You know, the, I guess, traffic was another, another point, you know, I, I'd say on, on the, the Franklin access, you know, that, that small parcel on the, on the southwest side of the site, you know, we're fortunate enough to, to buy that from the school, you know, knowing that long-term the best route for them, we believed, would be to have, you know, the, their bus route go through that area. There's another site that is, you know, owned and is an operating business right now. So I think that's down the road. But, you know, I, I'd absolutely be on board with, you know, traffic, traffic calming, stopping, and definitely giving right of way to, you know, school buses over residents getting out of the community that way. Up on Aviator, you know, like it's been noted that the, the area is changing. We're, we're watching closely what our neighbors are doing and planning. We think this, you know, is a good compliment to that. And, you know, and we'll, we'll be standing by, you know, I, I'd, I'd be fully in agreement about, you know, no parking along Aviator, but that's obviously not my department. So appreciate the monologue and enduring it here. And I guess I'll, I'll stand for any questions, or Elizabeth, you want to jump up here?
Yeah, two minutes left.
Thanks.
Mayor, councilmembers, I actually just wanted to answer really one, maybe two questions that were raised. Councilmember Pro, one of the questions that was raised was about the school. If you look here, I don't know that I have a great picture of it, but there's a, a full, the sunset, sunset, sunrise landscaping is adjacent to our parcel, adjacent to the Barron parcel. And then next to that is the school parcel where there's the school bus turnaround. And so while, of course, Barron would be willing and able to put in any sort of traffic calming or stop sign that they could, the real parcel is the one next to us at the time that that goes to develop, because right now we don't have the ability to go in there, obviously, and make them put a stop sign on there. Also, there is, just the one last thing, is that I know that Aviator Street gets really busy. But when you really dig into the traffic impact study, it really shows that the only, the only time that there's real problems with it are at the morning drop-off and towards the afternoon drop-off. And other than that, all of the intersections are operating appropriately. There is a plan to eventually widen and do work on Black Cat in front of the school and all along this area. Right now, it's difficult. It's not something where you could go in and do an easy restriping, because there are really big, the great big huge transmission power poles are right there on Black Cat, which makes it really difficult to do any sort of quick fixes. But really, the only time that there's issues with these intersections is at, really, it's the morning drop-off hour, when people turn into the school and then they try to leave and make a left turn onto Black Cat out. With that, I'd stand for any final questions.
Thank you. Council, additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
Could you bring up the, the maps again? In the two that I've seen, the, the sunrise landscape parcel is, is that there's a compass piece that sits in between yours and the sunrise landscaping. Is that not what I'm seeing on here, plus the other? I believe it also was on a couple of other, maybe not in your presentation, but in the, in the file. There's a map that shows its location.
Mayor, councilmember Pro, do you have a good picture of that, Sonia? More zoomed out. I don't know that we do. I know that coming in from the corner, I may be mixing up a couple parcels on the corner. I believe there is a highway, a Idaho Power substation. And then there's one or two, it may be the compass parcel. It may be, I think maybe there's the, you know, I can't speak directly to it. I feel like there's three parcels along there. One of them's the schools, one of them is the landscaping, and the other one I didn't, I was not aware of what it was, but it sounds like it's the compass one. One of them is a landscaping and the other one I did, I was not aware of what it was, but it sounds like it's the compass one. Whatever it is, is the school, that school right of way is not directly adjacent to this property. That school bus driveway. There is something between the school bus driveway and the Baron property.
Mayor, council, there's actually three parcels between this property and the compass charter school bus access. So I've looked at that already for you.
Council, any additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
That's important.
Just a short one. Elizabeth, is the the earlier comment about the private streets being in a common lot through the UDC? Is is that matter resolved and how you're going to proceed, or is the reference to an easement the plan?
Mayor, councilmember Wharton, we are going to put them in a common lot.
Okay. Okay, good. The last one's an easy one, too. There's reference, the condition of approval, and Sonia referenced it was incorporation of public art. I was curious if you had preliminary ideas with your team as to what you might want to provide and where.
Mayor, councilmember Wharton, yes, there have been preliminary discussions and it's anticipated that and they're just still, they're very preliminary at this point in time. But there's been talk about things like small fountains near the entranceway, maybe getting together with the compass school, having some sort of children, sort of decorated tiles, like there's just sort of, there's a lot of things out there right now, but there definitely is the plan for public art on this, and it likely will be something as you come in off of Aviator, there may also be something coming in off Frank. A lot of sense, and there's a little bit more space.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I understand there's work to be done on that condition, 1.1 D as in dog references it. I think it has some good language, which provides some pretty pretty firm sideboards on what's to be provided, some of the intent behind it. So that satisfies my concern for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Council and Pro.
So when I asked this question of of every application that's come in that has homes that are attached duplexes, multifamily, pretty much any development that doesn't have a significant amount of space between the units with and with private streets, which are much more narrow. On a daily basis, in any small community like this, we've got moving trucks, trash trucks, HVAC vehicles, landscape companies. I mean, there's, I live in a small patio home community and we have large trucks or vehicles from businesses like that multiple times a day. Norco, you know, delivering the the filters. How do you propose to handle that when, like, do you have spaces for those vehicles to come in and park, access, turnaround? And and I want to hopefully hear more from our fire department too on that, but but that is a regular part of daily life and and there are vans and buses that come in from those sort of vendors constantly. So I'm curious how that will be handled and how they will have locations to stop and park that won't block the the parking spaces for the residents.
All right, Mayor, councilmember Pro. Thank you. Good, really good question. There actually, the way this is developed is there's that you there's sort of, you can drive around or near to each of these areas, like it's almost like a block at the top, then you can get to everything off the middle and then again at the bottom with all the different accesses and private drives and then the experience that they've had with people leaving during the day, people, less people being there at different times, that that has been something that they've been able to work through, that it has not created any sort of huge problems in their experience. These roads have also all been, they were all initially approved or talked to the fire department about it.
Mr. Mayor.
Council and Pro.
Would it be okay if if I ask Chief Bloom to share some comments with us? So the the note that the fire department put in to the file says that they can't address. See, it says they're unable to maintain acceptable response times in this neighborhood because the locations of the fire stations. Could you share with us your thoughts on servicing this community? Including if there are any potential concerns with vehicles being parked in a wrong location and or the street with, please?
Council and Pro, yeah, as far as the response times are concerned, the city of Meridian will be able to respond to this location. However, in consideration of understanding what our total response times are, they're extended. That that does not mean that a fire department will not, our fire department will not respond to this. Should it had a an emergency that needs fire response, it's just an extended response. That's what that means. And as this project's gone through the plans review, as long as everything is within code, uniform fire code, as as it was approved through plans review, it's it's acceptable for apparatus to service the location. So as long as they're compliant with those those requests, there should be no problem with emergency response vehicles responding to parking in navigating through this location.
Mr. Mayor.
Council and Pro.
Specifically, this, the it's a street, but it, I think it's kind of acting like an alleyway there on the very east side. There is mention of there possibly being an issue to access that. Is that is that going to be a concern? I can't remember if the issue was the width or what the primary issue was, but I believe that was mentioned specifically.
Councilwoman Pro, as I understand, I'm not aware of any any limitation or restriction at this time with the access, the width on that east east side.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Council over here.
Elizabeth, I can't, I can't help but look at this and think there's going to be parking issues. I know you've told me that you think you're going to have enough spots. Where you will own and maintain this, do you also enforce parking violations as the owners on these private streets?
Elizabeth, can you get in the mic?
Mayor, councilmember Overton. Yes, there is an onsite. One of the things that Baron really does pride itself in is maintaining a high class, high end community throughout. And there is always an onsite. Well, there is during all business hours and regular sort of hours that there'd be leasing people there. There will be someone on site and there is always a 24 hour number where you can get vehicles moved if they do take their jobs of making this a very nice community. They really take a lot of pride in that and they do take enforcement actions against people.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Son.
Speak to the design requirements in the 10 mile plan.
Yep.
So I I just wanted to reiterate in response to Councilwoman Strater's comments earlier and concern that the proposed elevations are are currently not consistent with the neighborhood, traditional neighborhood design guidelines in the plan. I did not hear anything from the applicant stating how they intended to comply with those front porch requirements. So I am a little concerned that 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 is on the radar. So I wanted to chat a little bit about that. So the the ten, the townhomes along the eastern boundary of the site, staff does feel that they're consistent with the traditional neighborhood design guidelines. They have the front porches, the balconies, the street oriented design, their access from the rear from an alley. That's that's primarily the things we want to see in the 10 mile area for traditional neighborhood design. The unit, most of the units have good pedestrian access to the internal units. They have a good network of streets that are connected, alleys and sidewalks. They have good building form and character. The primary facades relate to the public spaces and pedestrian areas. They have a good mix of housing stock for diversity and housing choices, architecture and design. They have nice streetscapes, especially along the the main boulevard there. But staff is concerned about the design of the, specifically the units that front on the internal streets. Those do need to have front porches at at least 30% of their their frontage. So I just want to make sure that we're on the same page with that. And I I would specifically just to ensure that request that that language is added in DA provision 1.1 F to specifically include front porches for the street facing units. Not necessarily the internal ones. Those do have good pedestrian access. They don't necessarily need to have the street oriented design. I mean, preferably, you know, most of the units would have in in the 10 mile area. Staff isn't as concerned about those as long as the street facing units do incorporate more street oriented design. And the purpose for that is is getting getting neighborhood, neighbor, you know, more, more, that's the word I'm searching for. Getting neighbors to be out and be more connected with each other and and that's kind of the intent of the the front porches. These these units have more backyard areas and that's not really meeting the intent of the traditional neighborhood design. So that's all staff has. Thank you. Bill has anything you'd like to add on that?
Mayor, members of the council. You continue to get applications in this area. And as we I remember a recent project where we had the same discussion. And at that, at that particular hearing, we did discuss that, you know, you have the code requirements versus the comp plan. One is kind of the vision for the property, the other, the rules that you play by and the rules you follow. I don't want to diminish anything that Sonia said because she's correct. We want to get as close to consistency with the comp plan as we can. But that may not always be the case. And so there are trade offs. Just like the previous project that I brought before you, you look at, we've got to balance what the comp plan says, the density that we want and certain design criteria that we want here. And so the applicant's right, we have worked on over a year on this particular project. And if you would have seen what it was when we first started, you probably wouldn't be supporting the project. They have gone the extra mile to try to incorporate as many elements as they possibly could. Now, to that point, in the applicant's testimony tonight, their primary focus on this particular project is that boulevard through the development. And so in all fairness, the the comp plan wants the front porches to build that neighborhood, community identity to what Sonia was speaking to. But also the UDC for multifamily developments wants private common open space, and that can be in the form of front porches or enclosed backyards. So as you take this under consideration tonight, you have the ability, just like the previous project, if you feel strongly that these this these elevations should incorporate front porches. And as Sonia mentioned to you, you have the ability to include that in the DA provision and move forward with that, and we'll make sure that that happens. If you feel that there's a compromise here, you can certainly say the units along the boulevard incorporate more front porches and less enclosed yards, and then we can work with the applicant on some of those units along the boulevards. It's striking that balance of meeting the vision, but also meeting code. So at least I wanted to put that that thought into into all of your minds as you deliberate on this particular application.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor.
Elizabeth, would you comment on that? It sounded like the developer was open to working with staff to add some front porches. Are you amenable to that on the street fronting units? Could you caucus and let us know?
Have one minute, I believe. Mayor Simonson, councilmember Strater. Absolutely, that's what they want is to have that community feel. And so especially along the boulevard to make some sort of front porch, a bigger front stoop, something along there where people really have a place to set their chairs out, to watch the world go by along that front boulevard especially. And we could certainly consider it and work with staff on that. Or not consider it, we can do that and work with staff to make sure they approve it.
Mr. Mayor.
That's what we shared.
That's great. So it sounds like you're okay with making sure that all of the housing that faces the boulevard will at least have a front porch. If you could work with staff as well on some of the other street facing units, not necessarily on the boulevard, but to the extent that you can work with them to try to incorporate that, I think that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, additional questions? The applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
That's important.
To that point, if that's, if that principle is incorporated into this, these conditions of approval, this is a question for Sonia. I'm looking at 1.1 F as in Frank that talks about the design review. Do you need a specific reference in that condition that addresses what was just represented? Add a sentence to that or?
Mr. Mayor, councilman Wharton, yes, that's what I referenced. F there, including and front porches for street facing units, or if if you're just wanting the boulevard facing units, then clarify what you, you know, which what you'd like to see there.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I don't have a clarification. I just wanted to make sure if that's one of the elements that's going to be included, that whether it's councilwoman Strater or somebody else wants to identify any other specifics, so it can be included in that condition.
Mayor.
Councilor.
I I just think maybe during the discussion portion tonight, we should discuss if I personally would like to see it on all of the street fronting units, ideally, or the vast majority of them. As opposed to just the boulevard, but I'm open. I feel like either way, it's a movement in the right direction toward meeting the 10 mile specific plan. If any other council member has a strong opinion either way about, you know, whether to just require it on the boulevard or if they want to see it on all of the street fronting units.
And I would say we are in the discussion portion of of the conversation at this point in time, since there's no questions currently being directed towards the applicant. So council, it's your your discussion or your emotions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor.
Happy to kick off a discussion for sure. I really like this project. It hits a lot of the things that we would look for generally. I love that it is near our bus lines. I love that it's near transportation, even multiple forms of transportation. It is near an employment center with some higher paying jobs, I think, that would support this kind of middle housing. We're definitely missing a lot of our middle income housing. So this is a good thing from that perspective. It sounds like it will come very close to meeting the 10 mile specific area plan. The schools have capacity. They have come back with updated open space that now meets our standards. And it sounds like they're going to work with staff on the conceptual design. So, you know, I feel really great about it. The one thing I I think we maybe should add would be to ask for front, you know, front porches on the street facing units. I think that makes sense. If I'm the only person that that cares really strongly about that, I'm fine with just the ones on the boulevard as well. I guess those are my comments to kick off discussion.
Councilwoman Overton.
I echo most of councilmember Strater's comments. I'm good either way on the front porches on the non boulevard facing units. It it looks like really. It it looks like really you got one or the other. You got a you got a front porch with a balcony or you got a backyard, but you don't have both and you don't have none. So each unit has one of those amenities, but not both, if I'm not mistaken. So I'm good with it the way it's laid out. If that's the way the council decides to go. I think they've done a good job of spreading one of those with each one of these units. And based on how it's designed and how tight that is on the boulevard compared to the others. I know it doesn't meet the specifics of the ten mile plan. But I think it's about the best way that it fits into here, at least the way I view it. So I'd support it the way it goes right now.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I do have a question for staff real quick. If we push those and say porches everywhere on front, the fronting road road access. Are those backyards counted in any of the open space calculations for ten mile plan?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland, counsel, no, they are not. That's private space, not public.
Okay, just thank you, Sonia, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to be sure about that. Didn't think it was, but when you move things around, things change, so. Yeah.
Sorry.
Go go ahead, Sonia.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Hoagland, I was just going to say the open space exhibit there on the left. All the kind of blue areas are private space and that is not included. All the green areas are included. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, that's about when we talk about streets, the boulevard definitely meets to me that definition of a street and then having porches along that. The other sections, yes, they're 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 drivable, there'll be parking. How many are there that would? It's hard to tell from the layout, does are the front porch worthy, if 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 that makes sense? You know, and it's it's one of those things that you go, yeah, is that? You want to have interaction, and I think open space is important for that interaction when people are up. And if there if there's a dog park at the pool, at some of the playground, those are places also that that interaction takes place. And I I do like the boulevard having that feel and look, and I think that's a great amenity to have for for porches along that. The other, I'm kind of like the others, that kind of said, well, I I I don't have to have it, you know? It's it's not not critical. I think this, this is a great design, it's a great, great amenities. And it meets the the intent and the spirit of everything that we're trying to accomplish. So I'm I'm happy if we just end up with on the boulevard. It's not a not a drop dead if if we, somebody wants it everywhere, any on every street that's that it's facing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we require it on the boulevard? We can, you know, these other streets, to your point, I mean, they're not, they're not as prominent. If we required on the boulevard, it sort of meets the spirit and I could live with that compromise.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
I agree, most of the, just looking in detail here at the open space exhibit. And it looks to me like most of the front porches would be facing parking areas. Unlikely folks are going to use that as a porch in general. So I'm agreeable to only requiring on the boulevard. I do have one quick question. I don't know who can answer it, if it's staff or the applicant. The walkways that run along the boulevard in front of the units don't look like they cross over. And again, this is just a, this is a concept plan technically. Don't look like they cross over the green space from the parking spot on the street to the walkway in front of the units on either side. And I'm wondering how that works with with seniors and ADA accessibility. So I don't know if that's something that staff will follow up on and require, and it's just not on the drawing. But are are individuals going to, in the winter time, walk over from the parking spot, the parallel parking spot? Are they walking over that little bit of green space to get to the sidewalk, to get to the unit?
Mayor, council, if if I'm understanding you correctly, you want to make sure there's some, you're trying to connect both sides of the road with one another with crossings? If I'm.
Mr. Mayor. No, I'm trying to make sure that someone can safely walk from a parking spot to a unit and not have to go across
All the.
Green space. Not only does it affect the landscaping, but also if you are carrying three bags of groceries and it's icy, you're not going to, you know, you don't want to fall. I I think it would be good to have sidewalk connections some more more frequently along from the parallel parking over to the units on both sides. Versus just, it looks like there are connections, but they're all the way at the north end and all the way at the south end and none in between.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Pro, are you, are you speaking about the parallel parking along the the boulevard and that having some just little pedestrian sidewalks over to the main sidewalk? Okay, thank you, I just want to make sure I understood that. If if you want that included, please include that in your motion, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I I don't see where it's missing, but it's really a small picture. It's a very small picture, so it's hard to see where exactly we would need to put in those additional, I guess, small pathways. Councilwoman Pro could comment further.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
And so as you can see, the little, the circle in the middle, on the south, you have five, five parallel parking spots on either side of the boulevard. And in that stretch, to get from those five parallel spots to get over to the walkway, there's, there's no concrete at all. You're, all of those five spots are going to walk over the green space to get to the sidewalk in front of the units. You see where it says Parkway? The word Parkway? Are you looking, I'm looking at the open space revised exhibit. Sorry, I have it up on my screen, I'm not looking at the presentation, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. That's not something that our city code requires and we don't typically require. If you, if you want to, we can, but it it would probably require a lot of, if you're wanting some for each vehicle space, it'd require quite a few connections across there, but just wanted to clarify, thanks.
Mayor and council, if I can just, now that I understand where you're getting that, Councilwoman Pro, I appreciate that. So certainly Sonia and I, the zoning code defers to the building code when it comes to ADA compliance. So as the applicant designs their units, if some of those units are ADA units that front on the boulevard, they will have to design ADA parking stalls and ramps to provide that access to those units. So that will be addressed as part of their plan review for the building department. And that's when you'll have that additional walkway, trinket domes and all of those things that come along with access into the units.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
Perhaps I shouldn't have used the words ADA because there is technical requirements on that. What I mean is just, just an individual safely crossing over that, the landscaping to get to the front of the unit. There's not a place. And it's, it's not, it's not pulled up right now on the presentation screen. I was looking at the exhibit on my own screen. So if on the lens, on the revised open space exhibit, if it's possible to bring that up on the presentation screen, that would be helpful. Like just it's by on its own. I just pulled it from Laserfish. Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
Sonia, on this screen that you have here, can you zoom into the boulevard?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Pro, give me just a moment here.
There's a Mew that runs on either side of the parallel parking. There's no pathway or or sidewalk connection from the parking spots to the units. Yes, so maybe one on that side, two on the other side, correct. Same in the south, you can have one in front. So you see on the duplexes where there's a sidewalk from the duplex out to the, or excuse me, you know, a connection. Yes, correct, right? That's correct.
The only challenge is if cars are parked there, you can't access it.
Yeah, what?
If cars are parked in those places, you can't really access them because you're gonna.
Well, they're either going to walk across the landscaping or they're going to walk on a piece of concrete. One way or the other, they're, they're not going to go all the way up to the, somebody's not going to get out their vehicle and walk all the way up to the existing connection, all the way south to their connection.
My my point is if you have a car parked in front of, unless you're going to take out the parking space. If you have a car parked in front of where that is, no one else can access it. So it may, it may work for one car. If you connect, if you're connecting it right out there to where the parking is, but someone parks there, then it's.
Correct, well, let the applicant figure out how to design it. But there needs, one way or the other, there needs to be concrete over that green space to get from the parking spots to the sidewalk for safety purposes, in my opinion. However, the applicant wants to put that in, they can figure that out.
Mayor, council, if I, if I may, just help move the discussion along this evening. Now, certainly, I I like where you're, where you're going. I think it makes a lot of sense. That that may require lots of some of that parking to do that. I, and there's, again, they are overparked. So I think if you keep the condition flexible, allow the applicant to work with staff. I think we could probably come up with something and and enhance that connectivity, trying to get to the spirit of what you want us to do. Because right now, looking at it, to mayor's point, it's it's difficult to pinpoint those exact locations. But again, I've had conversations with the applicant and they're open to having more conversations with us and and working through some of those comments. But I think we can achieve what you want.
I am happy to try to close the discussion and make a motion unless there's any other concerns or, okay. Mr. Mayor, I, though we close a public hearing. Second.
Have motion second to close the public hearing is very discussion. If not, I'm favor saying bye bye saying aye.
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 Pose name, guys, have it, the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
After considering all staff, applicant and public testimony, I move to approve file number H twenty twenty two dash zero zero seven nine as presented in the staff report for today's hearing date with some modifications. So under condition one point one F, go ahead and modify that to require front porches for the housing units that face the boulevard. And we'll add another condition, a new condition to, for the applicant to work with staff on enhancing the pedestrian connectivity from units directly to the boulevard. Hopefully that covers Councilwoman Pro's point. And then the applicant will work with staff and Compass Charter School to enhance the the safety through traffic calming or other measures on the private streets that are within their control if needed.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, is there discussion, Councilwoman Pro?
Apologize, I didn't hear that second motion. Question about condition B point two point nine. Applicant's agreeing to put that in the common law, so that condition stays in staff report? Okay, just wanted to double check that, that that was getting specifically addressed, thank you.
Okay, is there further discussion on the motion? If not, court call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Strater.
Aye.
Overton.
Aye.
Pro.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland. Aye.
All eyes, motion carries, the am is agreed to. With that, we'll move on to the next item this evening, which is public hearing for artists and victory market H twenty twenty two dash zero zero six six. We will open this public hearing with staff comments. Mr. Bortner, you still there? Mr. Bortner, are you still there? All right, Bill, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Last item on the agenda tonight is the Arts and Victory Market application, which consists of annexation, a pre-plat, conditional use permit, and also a private street. So this particular project is the same applicant from the previous project. So a lot of the same application materials and information that's gonna be shared with you will be similar to what you just heard. Minus the fact that this is not part of the TMISAP area. So we won't have to say that over and over again for you in this presentation. So you can see here that the site consists of 14.47 acres of land. It's currently zoned RUT in eight county. And it's located, the physical addresses for all the properties here that you see on your screen is 2820, 2910, 2960, and 3020 South Eagle Road. Believe it or not, there is some actual history on this particular property, even though it was in the county. And 2005, the city did approve a comprehensive plan map amendment to change this area to mixed-use community. And then 2006, some of the property owners came forward with, as part of an annexation. And that particular application was denied at that time. So comp plan amendment moved forward, annexation was denied by city council because they didn't feel it was consistent with the plan. So the applicant here, again, is here tonight to discuss development of the site. The current comprehensive plan, as I mentioned to you, is mixed-use community. You can see here on the future land use map to the left that the 14 acres is part of a larger mixed-use community area. Approximately 50 acres, to be exact, to be precise for you this evening. And so when staff was analyzing this project for consistency with the comprehensive plan, we did look at the mix of uses in this larger area, the 50-acre site. So starting from the north and transitioning to the site, I thought it would be important for staff to share with the council what's actually developing in the area so you can get the flavor of the uses in the area. To the north there, adjacent to the Reidenbach Canal is a storage facility. There's an office park. There's some single-family detached homes, R8. This particular project, which has the multifamily development and a small commercial node. And then on the hard corner, you have a daycare, retail, and then a restaurant with a drive-through use and an assisted living facility. And as you transition onto the south side of Victory Road, there is the Rite Aid, another daycare facility, and another coffee shop with a drive-through. So overall, when we analyze this project and found it, we found it consistent because of the mix of uses that are currently occurring in the greater area. I'd also mention to you that the desired density in a mixed-use community areas between 6 and 15 dwelling units to the acre and the project before you tonight is roughly 11 dwelling units to the acre, which is consistent with the comp plan designation for residential component of the project as well. Also let the council know that I drove by the site here on weekend and noticed that all the structures were removed from the property as well. So now it's a clean slate. The applicant's gone in and cleaned up the property. So it is ripe for infill. Again, the applicant is here to talk with you about annexing 14.47 acres. You can see they are requesting two zoning designations. One is the CC zone, which is approximately 2.1 acres. And it's located in the southwest corner of the development. And the remainder is the applicant's requesting the R15 zone. I'm Ray Plack, consists of five buildable lots and one common lot. So again, there'll be two commercial lots here in the southwest corner. And the rest of the, there's three multifamily lots, again, zoned R15. The purpose of this graphic in front of you this evening is I wanted to show you the connectivity that the applicant is proposing with this development. So starting along Eagle Road and then transitioning to the east, the applicant is proposing an access to Eagle Road. And this is a shared driveway essentially, which has been approved by ACHD. And then they're also proposing cross-access with the adjacent property to the south, which is the Inglewood subdivision. This internal loop road here is the private street that has been approved by the director to not only provide access to some of the multifamily units, but it also provides opportunities to provide addressing for those units because of the number of units that they're proposing on the site. And then the hatched areas again are parking areas or shared driveways, not common driveways, just shared drivers like the Eagle Road access. And then you can see here with the adjacent developments along the north, east, and south, the city required sub-streets to this road. And so the applicant is proposing a segment of a local street to punch through with this development. And that's what I've highlighted here as well for you. And then, as I mentioned to you, cross-access with this property was reciprocated to this development. So we are getting that. The main reason why you see a small commercial node for this development is staff felt this was the appropriate transition for that to occur because of what was happening on the property to the south with the daycare center. So it made sense to create the commercial node here along that area and then transition more with the multifamily to the adjacent residential to the north and to the east. Here are the, again, just like the previous plan, the applicant has a mix of product types, a conditional use for that multifamily development. And they show you, highlight all the various different residential types that they're proposing. This comp plan does not specify two residential types like the 10-mile area does or other mixed-use, traditional neighborhood residential zones do. But in this particular case, the applicant likes to have a mix of residential types in their developments and staff is supportive of that. And it is supported by the comprehensive plan. The other thing that I wanted to point out on this graphic is the commercial note here. You can see one of the tenants is a retail use with a drive-through use. And because staff viewed this as more of a neighborhood-serving commercial node, if you will, we wanted to limit the amount of vehicular traffic in the neighborhood. So we felt it appropriate to restrict this property to no more than one drive-through on the site to limit that. We thought, given the fact that this private street does provide access to a majority of the units, we've tried, we wanna try to minimize that Eagle Road access as much as possible. And that's why it was so critical to have this residential local street network happening with ACHD and making sure that it doesn't allow too much cut-through traffic. I'd also mentioned to the council that as part of both ACHD and city staff's recommendation, the applicant is and has provided traffic calming in the north-south roadway that you see here running through the development. And that was some of the discussion that we had with the commission. So that was very critical that that occurred. As I transitioned to the open space with the project, you'll see that the new open space exhibit does show that traffic calming is part of the project. So again, the applicant is, this particular project has, the applicant's proposing 131 residential units, which includes 24 two-story townhome units, 31 duplex units, and 45 single-family detached units. And then, of course, their main amenity is a centrally-located clubhouse here as you come off the Eagle Road entrance. Bedroom mix includes 62 one-bedroom, 53 two-bedroom, and 16 three-bedroom units. So as I mentioned to you, just like any multifamily mixed-use project, the applicant is required to provide a certain amount of open space. In this particular case, the code requires 1.93 acres of qualified open space. As we transition from commission to council this evening, the applicant was required to provide a revised open space exhibit, which you see in the middle of the screen here. And I'm happy to report that the applicant's providing 2.47 acres of open space, which does exceed the minimum standards of the code for the multifamily standards. Also want to mention to you, because this is a mixed-use development, that the commercial portion also has to provide some former plaza or usable open space. So staff is, has conditioned applicant to provide that open space as part of their recommendation, and that will occur somewhere in this area. Details to be figured out when commercial development is proposed for the site. Again, there are no tenants specified for the commercial portion yet. But because there is a multi-tenant building here and that retail use there, we feel that there will be more than adequate commercial for this particular development. The code requires 191 parking, or excuse me, 281 total parking spaces for the site. The applicants, and I'm sorry, 191 for the multifamily and the applicants providing 274 in excess of code requirements. I'd also mentioned to the council that this does not account for additional on-street parking that occur, that can occur along East Titanium Avenue, which is the north-south roadway here. And then the commercial component as in excess of 55 parking spaces. But keep in mind, that could be diminished with the requirement for the plaza area and some additional pedestrian connectivity through that area. And the applicant's aware of that. So I think really for tonight's discussion, it's just important to note that they exceed the code by a great amount. And then also, you can see the open space graphic also depicts all the interconnected pathways throughout the development, just like envisioned and required for mixed-use developments. And that represents some of the blue walking paths here and then the red areas as well. And then also in the lower right-hand corner, you'll have the fencing plan for the development. Just like the previous project, the applicant's proposing similar amenities. So you're gonna be looking at fitness facility, the clubhouse, swimming pool, children's play area, passive open space areas, the interconnected walking paths, community garden. And then also at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, the applicant did commit to adding electrical vehicles, the charging stations as part of this development as well. And it was conditioned by staff to do so. Here's the amenity plan. I won't spend a lot of time on the building elevations as we did that on the previous hearing. But again, similar architecture as to what you can expect on this site, as you can expect in the 10-mile area, and then also to other projects that the applicant presented to you. In this particular case, the front porches aren't the main focal for, as it's not required for a mixed-use development. So I won't go into too many of those details. But again, overall, staff believes that these elevations are consistent with the architectural standards manual and will verify that when we actually do the design review. So I would mention to the council that the commission did recommend approval at the April 6th hearing. Testifying in favor was, of course, the applicant team. If you had a chance to look at the public record, there was quite a bit of public testimony in opposition of this particular project. And most of the primary concern stemmed around cut-through traffic, the density, of course, just congestion in the area and the extension of South Titanium Avenue. And then commenting at the hearing, we had Lori Delaney, Dave Bailey, Matthew Riggs, Bev Montgomery, Jennifer Jenks, Rita Skinner, Carl Coons, and Leanne Richardson. Again, these were residents of the assisted living facility that they were concerned with, just public safety. So I would also mention to you, in looking at the previous approvals with the Inglewood subdivision, which is the property directly to the south, that developer was required to put in traffic calming as part of their project through South Titanium Avenue. And looking back at that public testimony on that project, it was clear that both the commission and council wanted that as well. And looking at the Google Maps this afternoon, I can see where they've added an additional pedestrian connection across East Titanium. And I think that was to suffice for their traffic calming. But one thing that stood out for the commission was that this applicant and that southern property owner was required to work together and come up with a strategy. And I wanted to step back here. You can see in this open space exhibit, you can see where they have a chicane here where they choke the road down. And then also at the intersection, they have some bulbous here to add that traffic calming component to slow down traffic through there as discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission. So key changes, most commission changes anyways, the staff recommendation again. DA provision C was modified to allow the applicant to get under construction prior to recording the plat. Again, coordinate with the southern property owner on the traffic calming, which they have. And I'm sure they'll share that information with you tonight. And then just like the previous application, Public Works General Condition of Approval 2.9 was modified to mimic the same language as the previous project, consistent with previous approvals. So really, no outstanding issues for tonight. I had a chance to go back and look at the public record, and we have not received any additional of the comments on this application since the Planning and Zoning Commission. Again, both staff and the commission recommended approval. I'll conclude my presentation and stand for any additional comments or questions you may have.
Thank you, Bill. I guess you get my questions and these are directed now to you since you've said that this was staff level recommendations. Can you go back to the site plan? Very, that, that one works right there. You know, personally, I've had issues with putting commercial into residential locations, but now we're putting commercial with drive-throughs into a residential location. And then we're going to put them out on private streets. Speaking of someone who lives in this area, depending upon what product goes in there, I'm not going back out on Eagle Road. At the entrance exit there, I'm going to either go up to EasyJet and exit out on EasyJet, or I'm going to go south to Victory. Explain to me what the rationale for having private streets, which are going to have to carry drive-through, commercial traffic is as compared to making that a public road. Tell it connects out to the north, south connect, connection.
Mayor Council, again, I appreciate the questions because certainly when we look at mixed use, the intent is to try to get that where we can. Simply put, it's like, like the last project, right? We, we work with applicants, we try to come with workable solutions or at least concepts that they, they can bring forward. The questions you brought up tonight were the same things that we, conversations we had with the applicant. When we originally started with this project, our intent was to have commercial along the entire Eagle Road frontage. So you would not have that. You could actually bifurcate the two and have a logical extension of that. But in working with the applicant and hearing some of their rationale, in their mind, at least in the discussions that we had and seeing where they're sandwiched between two residential portion to the north and a mixed use development to the south, in their mind, they felt it would be difficult to carry that much commercial as part of this project. And that's why when I opened up my argument tonight, or at least my opening remarks, I wanted to at least share with the council that there's more to this mixed use area than just this piece of property and that we should look at the entire context. Now, going back to your initial question is that's some of the comments that I brought up in the staff report, trying to mitigate for some of that. It's not always ideal that we do that. And that's why I think the applicant has an idea who they want to go here. They just can't share that information with us. So that's, that's where staff has some of that comfort level where, and that's why it was important that no more than one drive-through went through there. But with some of the design concepts that I required the applicant to do as far as integrating the commercial with the residential there, I was trying to mitigate some of those concerns because you're right, typically it's hard to mesh and minimize the vehicular impact to adjacent neighborhood when you have a private street network. But in this particular case, knowing what I know and, and working with this applicant and they've agreed with the conditions of approval, I think we can minimize some of those, those comfort, some of those concerns that you raised. And in, in, in staff's opinion, this is treated no differently than a commercial drive aisle. It's the same width. So that's where staff's rationale came in. It's like we want cross access, we want these projects to integrate. This is all part of the same mixed use development. So we did concede a little bit and was supportive of what the applicant proposed is because of the integration and some of the other design concepts that come along with this project and the adjacent project.
Okay, we, you've answered my question. I would say generally I would not be supportive of this concept of putting, you know, making the transit, you know, saying you need to put in commercial to make a transition when frankly, you're already could make a transition without the commercial and leave it all private road network, which then is going to eliminate non commercial traffic into the area, which can also eliminate other types of cut through traffic that we know i- it's going to happen. I mean, yeah, commercial drive aisle, whatever you want to call it. But if you put a commercial space into that location, you're inviting traffic off of Eagle Road in and it, it will have to go through the development to exit in some other area. And if you're going to do that, I don't know what's better. Slowing people down through private street or putting expectation that this is a car path to get out to where you want to go. But that's what's going to happen because you're not going to be able to turn left on Eagle Road out of this location generally. And so you're going to have to go through it depending on the, the commercial use. So right now there's five people. So I'm not voting, but if we lose one, that this will become an issue, at least for me in the future. So. Counsel, additional questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, Perrow.
Thank you. Bill, this may just be because this is a, the landscape plan is just a rendering. It's not an engineered document, but the driveways on the attached units on the very south side, that they're, they're different sizes in the, in the photo. But just wanting to double check that all of those are indeed 20 feet long driveways or more. And that's not just, that's just a an element of the drawing.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Perrow, they are conditioned to provide 20 feet. Because I called out the same thing. They're, they're a little narrow. And the applicant's aware of it.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, Nova, over.
Bill, could you just walk me through Titanium as it goes south? Doesn't look on Google Maps unless it's been changed that it's at the same level of roadway as what's coming out of this development. Is that just me looking at Google Maps and trying to compare the two of them or? I don't see curb gutter sidewalk. I guess there is on Titanium. Is Titanium completed? Is it finished? The south portion?
Mayor, Councilman Overton, yes, it's, it's nearing completion or it is completed at this point. And that's why they have to extend it. And that's why during the commission hearing that was, and the public record had so so much public testimony on that issue because they did not want the road extended through there. But to the mayor's point, this is the most critical piece of the project because if we didn't have this, then everyone's driving, you're, you're creating more of a situation going on the private roads by not having this public street network going through here could exacerbate the problem on, on the private streets, which we're trying to, to give people multiple ways out so that we don't overload the private street system and that other people can get in and out of here and get people to the light. Either Victory or even EasyJet out to the light on Eagle Road.
Yeah, I've been staring at this roadway plan for two days, trying to figure out which way I would get to get out of here or come in, because that's how I work. Obviously, you're going to want the light on EasyJet. If you're going to go out on Eagle Road, you're going to go right out, out of this development. But if you're going to hit Victory, you're going to go right next to that retirement center, right down South Titanium. And if you put on top of those apartments, a drive-through, you're not knowing what drive-through we're talking about. We're talking about a lot more traffic adding on to what the apartments would bring. Sure, I mean, publisher's going to get a little bit of traffic, but it looks like it's going to go primarily through that section right now, which is just the retirement center. Am I looking at this correctly?
So you can see in, I pulled up our, our zoning map, so you can see that it is constructed. Yes, that was the concern and that's why we had the traffic comment.
Counsel, additional questions for staff? Okay, well, the applicant like to come forward, please.
Good evening. Elizabeth Kekaritz with Givens Persley, 601 Bannock, representing the applicant developer in this case, Baron Properties. With me tonight is Matt Riggs, Greg Hector and members of the development staff. I first also on this one, this project has been going on for what appears to be years. And so we really want to thank Bill for hanging in there with us. I think over the last couple of years, we've worked with every single planner that the city of Meridian has. So once again, there were a lot of iterations, there was a lot of collaboration and we think that we did ultimately land on somewhere on a really good mix. To some of your points, Mayor, this has gone from all commercial along the frontage to a planner who said, that's fine, take out all the commercial, you don't need any commercial to maybe do this little bit of commercial. And now we've ended up with these two commercial pads. And we think that based on what's going on in the neighborhood, having the one larger pad and then having one that's going to be smaller and it's more demisable into five or six, maybe seven spaces is a really good unit mix there. And especially the smaller one is really going to bring in just a lot more of the sort of local traffic, like that's more of the accountant, bookkeepers, that sort of business. And then the bigger one on the corner, there is that cross access, which was really important to provide so that there's really more of a direct flow down through that subdivision to the south, which is by and large part commercial on the hard corner. It's a lot more commercial. And then there's the senior living facility adjacent to that more in off of the corner of Eagle. So going through that, since we already have talked about all of this, I will skip through much of this. So looking at the site plan here, one of the things, and you'll be able to see it maybe a little bit better when we get to the picture with the dots, is the surrounding zoning is R15 and CC to the south, R8 to the north and R4 to the east. And one of the things that we really looked at and the development team really looked at in this, in developing this one was recognizing that this did a butt up against residential neighborhoods. And so all of the more intensive, the two-story buildings, the townhomes are all located along Eagle Road or on the south where they go into that more commercial, higher intensity uses. And that's where the commercial is also located. The homes out to the, on the northern boundary and on the eastern boundary, those are all one-story homes. And that was very purposely done so that they would absolutely minimize the impact on the surrounding communities. In fact, the homes on the left, on the east side, there's only one more residential lot, like single family lot than there. This, our east side only has one more home than there are what they're abutting up to. And so it really does go to minimize the impact on the neighbors, which many of those homes are one and two-story homes. As Bill mentioned, this is a few, this is a mixed use community area. And the future land use map shows that it's really been developed in large compliance with what you have suggested with a mixed use community area. To the north is the storage, then there's an office park with an accountant, a dentist, things of that nature. There's beneath that, there's slightly higher family, higher density, single-family residential, which is our eight zoned. Then there is the multifamily community that we're proposing right now, followed by the daycare and over 55 community, some other things going on on the hard corner and then right aid across the street. And so when you look at this as an integrated whole, the one thing that this development, this community does not have is any sort of multifamily residential, which is what I think makes it really appealing for this to go into this location because it really makes it all flow together. Once again, here's the dotted picture. There's again the large variety of residential home styles made with the same quality materials. There's the variety of roof lines and facades, the variation in products. Here we have 24 townhome units, which are the lime green on the southern and the western boundaries. We have 62 one-bedroom, one-bed duplexes, which makes it 31 buildings, which are in the purple along the north and along Titanium primarily. We have, there's 21 two-bedroom, two-bath, single units in red. There's 16 two-bedroom, two-bath units with, which also have a one-car garage. Those are the aqua blue on the east. And Councilmember approach your question. Yes, we are making sure they're actually a little bit wider. The drive aisles are a little bit wider. They will fit all the standards. They're definitely more than 20, maybe 24, I'm not sure, but they will fit in there. And Fire has looked at it and has approved that. And then there are eight three-bedroom, two-bath singles in the royal blue. And those are located sort of south of the northern private street, which is Loon Lane. You can see this is one of the bigger units, the three-bedroom, two-bath. It does come, there's eight of these. It's a full 1,300 square feet, which is quite large for this type of development. There's two different roof lines shown here and the three exterior color schemes. Again, these, all the units come with the same high-end amenities. Here again is one of the one-bedroom, one-bath duplexes that we've discussed and almost half of the units are slated to be these one-bedroom, one-bath duplex units. They're really popular. The clubhouse, again, it's a clubhouse with all of the high-end amenities that you would expect in a clubhouse of this nature. It has workspace, a coffee bar, indoor gathering space, a Zoom room for meetings. There's a fitness center. Heading outside, there's a community pool with a hot tub, gazebos and high-end furniture, cool furniture. One thing we didn't have really much time to talk about last time is the garages and carports. And so there's, we meet at the code, obviously, and there's, so there's at least one covered parking per unit. But then they also provide detached garages and each garage has six garage bays. And then at the end of each garage are additional storage lockers. And so there's an additional 16 storage lockers. So that's a place where people can store their Christmas, you know, their Christmas ornaments, their various, their overflow, their skis, there are things of that nature, which makes, which is just a really nice amenity that's being offered here. Again, the community amenities, we have the qualified amenities, including quality of life, open space, recreation and multimodal. They do intend and have always intended on putting in EV charging stations that just got missed on the application. However, in fact, what they do, knowing that EV is becoming more and more popular is they start with just two or three spaces, but the entire development is where the infrastructure is put in. So as the demand grows, they're able to more easily just pop up those charging stations in the future. So as you come, there's a dog park on the northern boundary with the walking path. There's a tot lot adjacent to the swimming pool, which again, these don't tend to have a lot of kids, but as Mr. Riggs, as Matt Riggs discussed in the last one, whether you're a grandparent or a young person, it's really nice just to be able to offer that sort of tot lot playground, especially in this location where you're not directly adjacent up to a school where the kids can just run over and go play on the equipment there. The green space located at the corner of Publisher and Titanium includes a community garden. And there will be a plaza space. Absolutely, we agree with Bill that we need to get a plaza space between our commercial and our residential, but we are waiting somewhat to see who is the ultimate end user tenant there in order to best design that around everyone's respective needs. The interior amenities again are the same as before. They're all very high-end. They're very nice. They're the things that you would want in your own home. Here is a parking exhibit. There is a total of 270. Here is a parking exhibit. There is a total of 274 parking spaces. And if you look here, the covered garages are located in red, the standalone parking garages. The open spaces are the aqua blue. The covered parking, the carports that are more open are in green. And then the internal garages are royal blue. And so you can see there are quite a few homes with those internal garages as well as the rest of that parking on the property. This does not count and cannot count any parking that's on Titanium Street, where there will be the ability to have parallel parking along that street. There's an additional, also 55 commercial spaces, parking spaces, which depending on how that develops, that's more than what's required by code currently. But we think it's important to have that extra parking and that extra space. Open space. Here's the open space. One thing that we have added since the last, since we were in front of Planning and Zoning Commission, is along the eastern boundary that we have added a walking path along there to sort of continue to help with a lot of that connectivity. Also, Bill had asked that we put in another, another connection and move our trash receptacle that of course we can do. And you can see that there really are just a lot of walkways and pathways throughout here. With the open space, again, there we meet, we exceed the requirements. And again, each of these units has private open space that far exceeds what's required, the 80 square feet that's required by city code, ranging from, the townhomes again have the smallest, just with the 92 to 94 square feet. But the one-bedrooms, their total patio yard comes to 509 square feet. Two-bedrooms have 598 square feet. The two bedrooms with garage have 648 square feet. And the three bedrooms have 681 square feet, which makes, which is just a really nice amenity for the individuals living here. Okay, again, we are three miles from the fire station. We've confirmed that all services and utilities are available to the property. Traffic calming. This was a big point of discussion because many of the people at the senior center to the south and people to the north were concerned about the fact that the Titanium is a long street. So we actually have, since the exhibit that has been submitted to the city, we've actually added, in speaking with Bill over the last few days, we've added additional traffic calming, including there will be some, and these are all of course, subject to ACHD's approval. But this is what we're now currently proposing, is something really both at the northern entrance, that there would be a chicane, and then at the southern entrance, that there would be that narrowing. And it's really important, we spoke with the property owner of the senior center, the development team did, and talked to them about what we could do to help slow down traffic going through there. And I believe they are also going to be looking at things on their own property that they could also be doing to better mark the crosswalks for having a street go through the middle, essentially the middle of their project. So there are now, so there's going to be at all, each of the entrances, including coming in from the east on Publisher, there will be the traffic calming, the change, the street narrowing. And then there also will be bulb outs at the main intersection there on the south that you can see. We'll use tie-like painted crosswalks. If we could use raised sidewalks, raised crosswalks, we would. But it's really just working with ACHD to get in as much traffic calming as possible because no one wants this to become a really fast thoroughfare. Roadway connectivity was part of that big discussion and that it is really important that this roadway connect through. Councilmember Overton, to your question as to the percentages, like who's going to go where and how would you get out of here? Well, we have our traffic engineers and they tell us what they think, people, or how they're going to get out of there. And generally speaking, ultimately, whether you come out in and out of the entrance on Eagle or you go up to EasyJet and out, 65% of the traffic ends up going north. 10% goes south out of there and 25% will be using the southern entrance out onto Victory Road. And I think.
If you can wrap up, please.
And that's it. The commercial we touched on, and thank you. We'll stand for any questions. We're in full agreement with the staff's conditions of approval and the commissions.
Thank you. Council questions for the applicant.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Overton.
Elizabeth, I think you're pretty accurate on what I would expect to be on percentages going north, south, east, west. My question is actually to you or to staff, what type of drive-through would be eligible to be in that location? For example, would a restaurant, a Jack-in-the-Box be eligible that's open till 2:00 in the morning or 24 hours a day?
Mayor, members of the council, currently there's no prohibition on the type of drive-through. The DA just says that you can have up to one. But again, looking at the concept plan, looking at the square footages on that building, we would anticipate changes if that were the case. And I'd also mention to Mayor and council that this drive-through is not, it's, it's part of the concept plan, but they are still required to go back to planning and zoning and get that approved. So that was not part of this, this process at this time. And they're aware of that.
Councilman Pro.
I don't have a question, but just an idea on the traffic calming. So on the landscape plan, it shows, of course, applicants, when they submit renderings, they always show these big, huge trees, like they're going to look like that right away and they don't look like that for 15 years. I'd recommend if you actually do put some of the larger trees, so we know that tree-lined streets significantly slow traffic down. So maybe just consider, I noticed on your landscape plan that the red trees are intended to be kind of optimal-sized or larger. Maybe consider adding some of those through the main straight area on there. They, they will, in addition to the other considerations you're making, I don't know if there's, if there's physical space in, on, you know, in there, but I'd be great if that did have a boulevard feel. I don't know that there's space to do that. But the bulb outs, I love. I think, here in downtown Meridian on Main Street, we have several of them with landscaping in them. And I think they're not only beautiful to look at, but they also really do help with that 25-minute speed limit. So I thank you for adding that. I think that they, they make a significant difference. And they also just make it, give it some interest, some visual interest too.
Mayor Councilmember Pro, we absolutely can look at what sort of getting larger trees in there. We'll work with the city forester on talking to them about what we can get into those parkway strips.
Council, additional questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. All right. Mr. Kirk, do we have anyone sent up to write testimony?
Mr. Mayor, nobody signed up in advance.
Okay. Is there anybody here that would like to provide testimony on this item? Or anybody online that would like to provide testimony? You can use the raise your hand feature. No one online is raising their hand and no one in the audience is coming forward. Counsel, would you like to talk more before we ask the applicant to close? Would you like the applicant to come up and close?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I, I have a few just concerns that I will state, so maybe you could address those when you close or whenever. So I, we really struggle with mixed use. It's a pain point for us. We're trying to work through that, I think. This is a really good example of how like that integration of uses is really tough. I almost wish it said like pedestrian integration of uses or something because if it was something that was highly walkable, commercial, that connected with the residential, it would make more sense. Like where I'm struggling here with the drive-through, I'm just having a really hard time seeing how a drive-through is a compatible use with a residential neighborhood this close without some more buffering or something. So I'm not surprised to hear that you've been through so many iterations of planning because it feels like the ways to tackle that are sticking with residential only or, you know, putting commercial all along Eagle Road and then that would give you the ability to have some sort of a different kind of buffer. Accounting, bookkeeping, I'm not as concerned, but I don't know. So I'm struggling with that. I'm struggling with the drive-through. I understand that you would come back for permitting for that separately, but I still don't feel comfortable proceeding because of the, the thresholds for that. I feel like you're, you're pretty far down the line once you get to that point. This is different than the other application for a few reasons, right? This is not near an employment center. This is not near transportation. It is near Eagle Road, but it's not near any type of other transportation. And we do have some overcrowded schools, especially Mountain View. I would say to the neighbors though, for those who are listening and those who watch later, in terms of what you could have ended up with in terms of multifamily, this is really nothing compared to the density that it could have been. It could have been a three-story building that crammed a ton of apartments in. I mean, at least these are townhomes, duplexes, mostly single-story, all along, you know, where the neighborhoods are. I really do think this is, if you're going to have multifamily, this is the optimal type of multifamily. I agree with Councilwoman Pro's point about adding some more mature trees. I do, it's, you know, because we saw the, the application before and it maybe would have been better to change the order strategically. I'm sure you couldn't control that. But now I'm like missing the boulevard. Like I wish this had the boulevard now and I'm kind of bummed that we don't have that same kind of a feel. I don't know. So those are my thoughts, but just wanted to share those before you get up to speak.
Councilmember Overton.
Overall, I think the development's fantastic. I really appreciate the fact that you've taken into account the one stories on the north and on the east side to blend into the housing on each side. The only thing I'm struggling with is my life, I never wanted to be put in a position to approve a drive-through through a residential. And I don't know that I could. So I really like the residential piece. I'm okay with the commercial piece. I'm not okay with the drive-through aspect of the commercial piece. Other than that, I think you've done a fantastic job.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
I agree with my fellow council on concerns over the drive-through. I don't think this is an ideal location and just not a fan of folks driving on the private streets for a variety of reasons to get out either direction. I do have a question for Bill. If I remember correctly, the applicant on the south had intended on putting a drive-through coffee spot right there on the hard corner. And so I also am not a fan of considering for that reason. I don't know how far along, they were going to do a daycare and a coffee drive-through. I don't know how far along they are in that process. But if that was the intent of this applicant to have a business like that, I think it's already going to be available to that neighborhood.
Yeah. Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Pro, yes, the Starbucks is on the hard corner and that CUP has been approved. But nothing has started, they haven't started construction of that, that story yet.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Overton.
Yeah, when you look at this, you know, you see things later after development has occurred and you've got to the north, the storage units. And then you have EasyJet. And then we go R8. And you know, if it's like, boy, if we'd have really known things, have this everything shoved north and have drive-through there and then do the multifamily and this. I echo some of the comments. Yeah, this is well done. Good amenities. The pictures look very familiar. It is. It's trying to wrap my mind around a drive-through on that. And from what I understand, Elizabeth, you said those streets are same width as a typical ACHD public street. So that does help. It's not a, not a narrow street. Mayor said earlier, I think, yeah, EasyJet, people are going to use that for the, for the entrance and exit, especially if you're living in that unit unless you happen to be going up Victory or right turn on, on Eagle Road. Definitely wouldn't want to try left. I do try to find, okay, on that drive-through, and the way it's designed, it, it is a minimal impact to the, to the neighborhood with, with the design. So that's a good thing. And I thought, well, what if there's something else there? What if it's another daycare? And I thought, wait, traffic? I mean, anything you go with that, it's just makes it, makes it difficult. And so overall, good design, good amenities, all the things that you've done previously are, are high-quality. And I think working with the senior facility there to the south to mitigate the traffic speeds, things like that is very helpful. Just, yeah, that, that drive-through just kind of makes you scratch your head a bit.
Any other comments? All right, then I'll ask the applicant to come forward to close.
Mayor, council members. Elizabeth Kekret, still with Givens. So one of the things that we also struggled with, like many of you are, is the whole mixed-use integration. Because it is harder to have someone, you either have someone who's really good at commercial development and they do commercial development, or you have people that are really good at residential development. And they overlap to a point, but it's also, it is, it's more difficult to really fuse the two together in these mixed-use sort of developments. However, in this case, we do feel like we did hit a good balance for it. The one thing I'm hearing mostly are concerns about the drive-through. And that's something where we would certainly be open to limiting in the DA the types of uses that could have the drive-through. Like there's certainly, there's no intention of having a fast food restaurant here. Also with the Starbucks going in on the corner and then another coffee shop also on the corner, it just wouldn't make any sense to have that sort of drive-through. And so that's something that we're certainly open to doing. If we had to, we could get rid of the drive-through completely. However, then as plans develop for this site, we very likely could be back here again, asking for a DA amendment for, to be able to add that drive-through back in the future based on the sort of businesses that we could anticipate coming here. Further, to Councilmember Schrader's points, there is, there is maybe not quite as big an employment center right at this location, but there is a lot of employment that's going in currently right on that corner by the Topgolf, by the, there's, there's just a lot of big buildings that are going in right there. There's, I think there's a, there's a couple of different Tommy Alquist ones. There's the ICCU building. And so there are, there is becoming more and more employment in this area that will continue to appeal to the people who would be living in this development. The transportation, it just hasn't been extended to this area yet. That's something that VRT is, you know, constantly working on, constantly struggling with. And the schools, the schools, the elementary and the middle school do currently have capacity. The high school is a tough nut to crack. Like there's not a lot that we can do with this development to really help that. But we do know that there are fewer. But we do know that there are fewer students in these developments than there are in a lot of other developments, just because of the type of people. That it really appeals to. And to the extent that there are facing. Single families, younger families, they tend to also have the younger kids. And it looks like there is a little bit of space available in the school. For those, they tend to move out of these developments as the kids grow up and the kids get older. I mean, these are pretty small. And you start looking for the more space, the bigger space, the bigger units at that point. And so with that. I would once again just say that the Baron team. Does a really great job on their developments. They, by owning the project from beginning to the end, it. Really helps alleviate a lot of the other issues and problems that sometimes come with multifamily developments. And we look forward to moving this project to also forward in the city of Meridian.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, you still have five minutes and 44 seconds.
Hello again, Mayor, council members, Matt Riggs, 529 West Fordham. You know, we're really in agreement with, I think, the discussion around this drive through. You know, we don't want Jack in the Box on the corner of a site where we have 130 homes. There. What we showed here was in an effort to accommodate a user. That needed more of a pharmacy drive through window. And to be honest, our team has gone around and around. Along with Bill and staff about this commercial side of things and, you know, it feels like at times throughout the last year. Plus, it's been the tail that's wagging the dog. And so I think that, you know, in terms of the commentary that that's been, you know, provided today. You know, we're hearing you loud and clear on that commercial pad, not wanting to. You know, put drive through traffic out onto these, you know, private streets. You know, our intention was, you know, to show a concept in detail on here. Knowing full well that a CUP would be required and that if we were to move forward with this user. We'd be right back in front of you in, you know, the weeks and months to come, you know, months to come. So. A long winded way of saying, you know, we, we've attacked these mixed use communities. In Meridian, we've done two of them so far, Black Cat and Chindon and Ten Mile and Pine. We have delivered commercial at both of those projects. And it's gone pretty well. And you may recall, we were in here earlier this year. Refining a similar oriented lot at Black Cat and Chindon where we were taking. A what was designated to be a two story building down to a single level building and enhancing the property. So. I think what Elizabeth was alluding to in terms of changing a DA was along the lines of. Our main focus is housing and operating it and making it the best product available for, you know, the people that we think it'll serve. You know, St. Luke's and all the employment along 84 and Eagle being, you know, the first, the first look at that, but. Things evolve on the commercial side, you know, we wouldn't go out and speculatively build these pads today. We would. Engage local brokers to find people that would want to, you know, want to put their businesses there and then. Design a building, you know, under the parameters that we're putting forth here on the site. So. A really long winded way of saying, you know, we're still in the very early concepts on the commercial and, you know. We've heard you loud and clear. If it, if it's, you know, one of those non starters, by all means, you know, it's something that. We will take to heart and. Should think somebody pop up in the months to come wanting, you know, a different use that is commercially. You know, designated, we're going to be right back in front of you as per the process. So. I think that's, that's really why, you know, I wanted to get up and say, you know, is trying to figure it out. I think that Bill's orientation on. The plaza space has been great. You know, we've seen that in a couple of our other projects here and it's turned out really well. And it does integrate, you know, our projects. I think you failed to grasp how well. The site walks and how nice of a dog walk it is around, around these communities. And, you know, I think that's the other side is that this is, it's not the 10 mile plan, you know, Parkway corridor. But, you know, dealing with an ACHD public right of way, you know, really dissecting our site from north to south. I think we're setting up, you know, for a really nicely integrated, you know, project within our own boundaries and then, you know, to the neighborhoods around us. So. Appreciate again, Bill and everybody at the city working on this one. It's been. It's been a tricky one in large part because mixed use community is, you know, has a pretty broad, you know, range of things it could be and. We really enjoyed working with Bill and everybody on trying to hone in and sand and refine. You know, what this project is and how it wants to integrate. I think that the phrase, you know, pedestrian integration. Is really a good one and one that we've taken to heart. So that's all I've got. Appreciate, you know, everybody's time unless I guess there's any other questions.
Mr. Mayor.
I was on Hopland.
Matt, just a quick question on if the drive through concept remains. I know we've done this in other areas of the city where there's residential areas, but there is time limit. So it's. 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM restriction. Any issues with something like that?
No, no, absolutely not. I mean, I think we're, we're going to have, you know, orphans and children right at this site. We're trying to orient towards. Little kids going to get the school bus in the morning and then what happens after dinnertime in the summer at night. So. You know, if our chief operating officer who handles all things product and operations were speaking. She would, she would be standing on the hood of the car saying, that's absolutely okay. So.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
You had mentioned the drive through pharmacy concept. I don't know if that was just something you threw out as an example, or you actually have gone down that road with. With a possible buyer or tenant, but there is a pharmacy right across the street and then there's one a mile south. So is that. Was that legitimately something that's being considered or was just an example?
I know, Mayor, Councilwoman, that, that was, we've had legitimate letters of intent from another national pharmacy group. You know, they study your city very closely and they circle corners where they want stores. And so. It's a group that's in town. It's nationally recognized. And when we got that call, our eyebrows raised too, saying, hey, they're. Number one competitors, literally, you know, a pitching wedge away from, from us here. So. You know, it's one of those, it's by no means final. And honestly, I don't hold my breath with, you know, some of these larger, you know, national companies on. They just take a long time, you know, and have a lot of meetings to plan meetings, if you will. So I, I think it's something that we talked about with, you know, with staff because we had real interest there. But it hasn't materialized beyond them inquiring and running some demographic studies that they run internally. So. Again, I think we're approaching this knowing full well. That when we decide to build on the commercial. You know, we'll be refining concepts and planning, answering a lot of the questions that come up in any development. So we're doing the same on our other two projects right now, just a little further along.
So, so counsel, we need to do a hard stop in the next few minutes and then we'll come back after about a 20 minute recess. So not knowing how much more questions there are for the applicant, I know, see, because I'm bored and you unmuted if you wanted to. Just to, since you're not here in the room.
Sure. Yeah, just a quick comment. I think the comments from my colleagues regarding the drive through, I think are spot on. I think your Elizabeth's. Acknowledgement concession that. A DA provision to prohibit drive throughs, I think is most appropriate. I think it sounds like that's. Acceptable and if that necessitates a future DA modification request based upon a particular user. I'd rather have. That council address that based upon the merits at that time, but. For the purpose of this application to simply have a DA condition that prohibits drive through use. I think the reasoning is well laid out by the council members and your presentation. And I think it's truly supportive of the pedestrian purpose and focus of this development. So. I wouldn't want to leave it to a future CUP. I think it's best to prohibit it in the DA. And allow that to be modified if necessary at some future date. I do like the application overall, but. Just wanted to put a comment in as to the drive through.
Right. Well, why don't we go and take a break until 9:25 and we can continue at that point in time. So we'll send a recess. So. At time. 9:20, 9:25.
Okay.
I don't know why it's not working.
Well, he can hear us. Joe, you okay with this trying to proceed?
Yes, that's fine. I can see too. I just, you can't see me, apparently.
Fair enough. All right. So we will go and come back from recess. The applicant was up there. I don't want to shortchange anybody if we have any additional questions or comments for the applicant. Or if the applicant has anything further they'd like to say from where we were at the end of our last conversation.
Elizabeth Kekkert, Givens Persley, six oh one Bannock with Bear and Properties. One thing that I was just speaking with the applicant team about and had just also mentioned it to Bill was one of the other options because this is a really sort of difficult, well, it's just, it doesn't necessarily, I feel like we've done a really good job of making this flow work, but that the other option would be to, we would be comfortable also eliminating the commercial and just going with residential throughout the site. The overall mixed use community flume has all of the different components that are really needed for an overall mixed use community. And that's something where if council was amenable to that idea, which in a lot of ways would make a lot of sense, we would just ask to have about a month-long continuance, two, three weeks. We could probably be done in about two to three weeks and come back and present something of that nature to city council. That would be something else that we would certainly like to explore. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hobson.
Question for staff on, on something like that. I mean, it's mixed use. We do have, you know, commercial to the south. Are we talking per site, you know, type of thing, per development? Application or is it the area? I mean, these are conversations that I think we've had before in different things and what's our, what's our latitude on something like that? Cause that certainly is a possibility to, to go with that, not have the drive-through, not have the commercial and the varying amounts of traffic that accrue with something like that. So what's staff perspective on that?
Mayor, members of the council, you know, my opening remarks, my presentation, I, I try to kind of set the table for you on that and looking at a broader, a bigger area to let you know that there are a mix of uses because quite frankly, we struggled a little bit with it as well, trying to get, get them to fit in here and integrate well. As you know, we're trying to improve on that and make some changes to our comp plan in the near future, but again, from my perspective as a staff member working on this, I'm, I am open to that suggestion. I think looking at the 50 acres of mixed use community, we do have a mix of uses. We can make those findings to that effect and certainly that's within your purview as well. If you feel that there is a mix of uses in the area because we do have a daycare just directly to the south of this project, along with that restaurant use, along with some other commercial that's going to happen, another commercial site there. We have assisted living facility. So you can see just right there and then immediate vicinity, we have three different land use types consistent to what the plan calls for. Again, it's nice to have some of those neighborhood serving uses. To your point, there's a lot of employment north of this. But at, at the same time, if, if council believes that this should be developed as one single use, that's certainly within your purview. The comp plan does allow for you to look at that on a case by case basis. And staff is amenable, but we would need time to get all the necessary documents and continue to sell and really analyze it for you.
Mr. Mayor.
Members of the council, I guess Bill, right before we started up again, Bill asked if we needed to remand this, if that was the direction of the council and I don't believe we'd need to remand it. But I don't know how, if we take out the commercial, how much additional residential units are we talking about? Clearly nobody in the neighborhood, I mean, although there's a lot of letters, I, no one in this neighborhood is here to testify, not that that means anything because there is a lot of testimony in the record from neighbors. I don't know if adding more residential, I don't know the amount, so I can't tell you if it's a fairly minor amount of change. We have allowed some increase in density in other ones, but it's usually been fairly small. So I guess my suggestion, if we're going to continue it and redesign at least that portion of the commercial that fronts Eagle Road from the small commercial and, and drive-through that we renotice it at least. So that way there's an opportunity for neighbors. And again, there's quite a few letters in there and talking about traffic and access and things like that. Again, I, I'm not sure how much acreage we're talking about. So I don't know how many units it is, but I'd at least like the opportunity to, for us to renotice it. So at least we've made the public aware that there is a suggested change because it is merely a recommendation from P and Z.
It's from here.
Councilwoman Pearl.
I, I would prefer to keep the, the commercial in because in my opinion, there's a shortage of neighborhood services on the south side altogether. And I think that also helps to keep trips away from the Eagle and Overland intersection where we are really hitting capacity. So I, I don't know why it's named Artisan Victory Market. I kind of made the assumption that there was going to be a little grocery store or something there, which I was actually super in favor of. I was hoping that's what they were going to tell us. Because I, I really would like to see some neighborhood uses that will keep folks off of the already very, very busy intersections to the north. And also I have a question for Bill. Did I see that there is going to be multifamily applications just north of the storage units over kind of by where T-Mobile was? And I think there's going to be, I thought I saw two applications come through that are pretty significant amount of units. My, I see a lot of them come through, so I don't know if I'm imagining it, but I thought for sure there was going to be some large multifamily that's being considered just north of the storage units.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pearl, there was an application that was withdrawn. I know the Citibank property, they have a remnant piece that they're trying to sell off and we've, we've had pre-application meetings on that, but there is no active or pending application on that site at this moment. The other option too, and then, and I, I don't know what the rest of the council's opinion is on keeping the commercial, but again, if you don't like this building footprint and you really want to stick to that neighborhood flavor, the maybe the applicant would be amenable to doing another smaller multi-tenant building like the Northern Building and remove it, removing that drive-through component and making it smaller serving commercials. So you do try to minimize some of those impacts, but just there's some other options there that you could take into consideration if, if the council is wanting to, to keep that component. As I was mentioning, you know, even back to Mr. Neri's point, you know, currently we have this notice that's commercial and residential, not all residential. We have a notice as a plat with commercial lots and not all residential lots. So there's a lot of things that we have to take under consideration. If, if the commercial does get pulled out, we want to make sure we do it right. But I do like the suggestion of renoticing it, but make sure that we have, we work with the applicant with adequate timeframe and then make sure we get the revised documents so that it can go along with that renoticing. So I'm not sure if that can all be accomplished in a month or not to keep with the noticing requirements.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
This, this conversation presumes the applicant isn't accepting what we left off with. And if an application like this were to proceed that a DA condition removes drive-through components? Is that, are we being told that's not acceptable by the applicant? And so there's two pivot options?
Yeah, I think we're just exploring options if a drive-through is not an option.
One of them, Mr. Mayor, one is you could proceed with the application as presented and have, have that DA condition. But the question goes to the applicant that if that were to be the case, are they telling us now that that to them is not a viable option under any circumstance? So if that's the case, let's, let's hear that. And we can pivot to, do we need to continue it to redesign this commercial component that we want to retain in some form or fashion? Or continue it to eliminate it and bring back residential with renoticing? So I think those two latter options presume that the applicant is telling us today they won't agree to a DA condition that removes the, I just haven't heard him say it, so give him a chance to comment on that.
Mayor, councilmember Borton, the DA term is not ideal. It's not preferred, but it's, it is viable. The project is still viable. It's just, it would just, it's just not nearly as preferred an option as either limiting the uses, limiting the hours, having DA conditions that limit the limiting the hours, having DA conditions that limit the uses, limit the hours, or pivoting completely to residential. However, to have this project approved, it is something that it is viable, and it is something that we could do. It's just the least preferred of the options that have been sort of discussed so far.
Mr. Mayor, just a question on that point. Totally understandable. We've had difficulty in other scenarios where you try and condition drive-through requirements to such a degree that they basically don't really, you know, so long as you don't drive through them, they're great. Well, we don't want to condition them away. If the reality is, this should be commercial without a drive-through component, let's just say it. And if your, and if your team says, if that were the case, and you still want commercial on the southwest corner, let us tweak it a little bit, and we'll have some neighborhood commercial element there. It might not look exactly like what's here. But we can still have commercial. But do you think that's a preferred option? That you think it could be best presented with some adjustments, knowing that there's no drive-through?
Mayor, councilmember Borton, I think that it would be preferred to keep the larger, the one larger unit, and then the smaller five or six complex versus doing more of the smaller neighborhood serving units. Just from the sort of tenants that are more likely to be interested. And the one thing is that the tenant that they have had discussions with is really interested in having a drive-through option that can be limited on certain hours and times a day and lighting and all of those things.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Scherer.
I have a question about that. Are you saying that the potential tenant and setup with them would work to limit the hours of the drive-through or the hours of the establishment itself? Because that's kind of a distinction.
Certainly the hours of the drive-through.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Scherer.
Yeah, just like reflect on that rate. So I mean, if it's an establishment that's open 24 hours a day, the drive-through is closed. I still, I still don't, I'm like struggling with how that fits into this neighborhood. If it was neighborhood serving uses, I think that would make more sense, right? Like a bookkeeper is not going to be open 24 hours a day.
Mayor, council, like just to give you some code context on that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So the CC zone hours of operations are limited between 6:00 AM and 11:00 PM because of its adjacency to residential uses. So it will be capped. It's, I think, to Councilman Borton's commentary is like, do we want to restrict it even further than that and hold them to 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM or something to that effect? Or even 7:00 to 10:00 PM or something? That would be the, I think that's where Councilman Borton was getting at. But right now, they're going to be restricted regardless, unless they go through a CUP for extended hours, is how the code reads.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Scherer.
Thank you, Bill, for telling me that. I did not realize. I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hobson.
Elizabeth, we could, you know, continue this to June 20th. If renoticing is required, that'd be the earliest we could do this. And that would allow, I think, your team enough time to talk through this, decide what the best plan is for you. I certainly understand some small commercial may not work. I mean, it's just, that's difficult. And we know things are going the drive-through route. That's what a lot of people want. So and maybe the option is, you know, residential, but with the renoticing, that would allow the neighborhood to engage and understand what's happening and why. So we can continue to June 20th and let you guys talk it over and decide and work with staff and meet all the timeframes and everything. And then we pick it up from there. Is that okay with you folks?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hobson.
Unless there's further discussion on the topic, I would move that we continue the public hearing for Artisan Victory Market H 2022-0066 to June 20th, and that this project would also be renoticed for that, for that date.
I have a motion. In a second, is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Scherer.
Just, I don't know what route you guys are going to go to present, but there were some aspects of the Boulevard feel from the last application that were really nice that I think you you have the opportunity to include here. I would just suggest that you think about that. I'm like, it wasn't really like a roundabout, but like some of those elements would slow traffic quite a bit. So just something to think about.
And if I'm, I don't want to speak for everybody, but the first option is prefer no drive-through in a returned item. I understand there was questions about hours, but is that, just want to give the applicant some guidance on this item. Is that correct? Is that the council's hopes that there's not a drive-through on what they see back here?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
No, it's not ideal for the applicant. But I agree with Councilwoman Borton that I would prefer that that it be removed, and then there be a DA modification required so that it does come back in front of council and not just to have a CUP. And in this particular situation, because the drive-through is so close to residential, I wouldn't always necessarily, you know, think that we need to do that. But in this case, that would be my preference.
Okay, right. Thank you. Hopefully that helps in your preparations. So with that, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Post nay. You guys have it, and the item is continued. Thank you. Council, with that, anything on our future meeting topics? Or a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Post to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Post nay. You guys have it. We are adjourned.